All right, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Weston to order. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I was just gonna wear a white t-shirt tonight, but boy, I'm glad I dressed up. So, uh, it's awesome to have a nice crowd here tonight. And, uh, we'll, um, move along with this agenda here. Uh, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Ermely.
Here.
Hardinger.
Present.
Pinsonal.
Present.
Wyland, here.
And full house. Uh, public comments. I've got, uh, one form here for a public comment, uh, from a Jim Olson, uh, fifty-five oh three Whining Creek Drive. Jim, if you want to come on up to the speaker here. And, um, he wants to talk about Kennedy Park Project. What's his? Olafson. I'm sorry, Olafson. You've got a lot of supporters with you here.
We do, we do. Excited.
Is everybody gonna talk? Is everybody gonna talk? No?
They're not excited, I'm not.
If you could just state your name and, uh, address for the record. Thank you.
Jim Olafson, five-five zero-three Whining Creek Drive, Weston.
Okay.
So first of all, thanks for the opportunity to make the statement. Uh, I'm here as the president of Everest.
Excuse me. Guys, if you want to take the conversation outside, but if it's gonna continue all night, there's just that little buzz that gets continuous. If, if, just, oh, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Um, so as president of Everest Youth Baseball, we've been lucky enough to be working with Parks Committee over the last year, discussing the possible improvements at Kennedy Park, as well as number of other parks as well. We really believe that that is a, the center of our baseball community. And over the last year, we all agree that the plans put forward and put together would be a huge benefit to our community. And we have over five hundred kids in our organization, baseball alone, putting more, more families in softball and in hockey when you're talking about all the improved, possible improvements to the park. And we really believe that this is an immediate impact to our community. Not only to the basic rec baseball family that's there every night during the summer, but all the way to the business community that benefits when we have bigger and better tournaments. You, um, you really want the village to take the first step forward in this park plan. And we, as our youth organizations have come together for, um, to help financially support this project as well, we really need the, the village to take that first step. And on the Parks Committee Plan, softball field number three on the Redlinger Plan is a open field at this time. It would be an additional field between the pool and the skate park. And we really think that's our first goal and our for, and our, our first step forward, uh, for the village to take that first step so that we can help support the project as it moves along. So we're asking for that to be a focus moving forward in the next year.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is a public comment time only, but if we could, uh, hear, uh, the first names here of, uh, of your, um, the people helping you here tonight?
Ashlyn.
Owen.
Okay.
And then.
And then, okay. Excellent. And so you guys all agree too, right? Okay. All right. So it's unanimous. All right. Unanimous. Awesome. Good job. Yeah. Awesome. All right. Thank you all. Very much. All right. Uh, any more public comments? Anybody online? No? Hands up. Hey, you running the show tonight, right? Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask the board if we could, uh, just jockey up the agenda a little bit. Um, we'll do the four and five, but, uh, right after five, if we can move forty and forty-one up. So that would be the court and the police right above, right before six, if that's acceptable. And I have one more request. Uh, fourteen is the park and recreation acknowledgement. And we'd like to move, uh, thirty-eight, the ARPA funding requests and, uh, putting the money, you know, where we think it should go. So if that's doable for the board, uh, just, uh, for a show of hands or yes, no?
No.
No? Okay, yes, okay. All right. So let's do that. So let's do, let's go to four. Um, approval of February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting.
Second.
By Husheng and second by Steve. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number five, approval of March seventh, two thousand twenty-four Special Board of Trustees meeting. Moved to approve by Ermely.
Second.
Second by Wyland. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So now, moving with our changes, let's move to, uh, unfinished business, number forty. Uh, discussion and or action regarding a joint agreement establishing the Rothschild Area Municipal Court. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve the joint agreement establishing Rothschild Area Municipal Court, serving communities of Rothschild, communities of the Village of Rothschild, Weston, City of Schofield, Town of Weston, Village of Marathon City, and Village of Edgar.
Uh, motion by Pinsonal?
Second.
Second by Cronin on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, forty-one, discussion and or action on police protective services, municipal court services agreement with the Village of Rothschild. But motion by Ermely? Second by Wyland on the discussion. Jim?
Yes, I have many of them.
Okay.
Um, and attorney Eady or leave counsel for Rothschild reviewed the proposed agreement.
When we put the agreement forward, we said that we would seek that alternative counsel, and that was Attorney Flanagan, and he has reviewed the agreement. The agreement you see tonight was reviewed by Attorney Flanagan.
Which, which we had a joint, uh, attorney for both municipalities.
Yes. So it has not been reviewed by Attorney Eady?
Or Rothschild's village attorney.
Correct.
Okay. Um, in late in twenty-three, uh, I, I also serve on the, the current EMPD Finance Committee. Uh, in late in twenty-three, Attorney Eady and myself, with sense of time and research into the current EMPD Charter Agreement. I don't see any of those movements or changes that, recommendations that we had for that agreement, uh, incorporated into this one. Uh, so I just had some questions. Some of my follow-up here will be in relation to that, uh, to, to try and obviously it's changeable, right? We can always change it, but it's gotta go back to both bodies and then, um, it would just make more sense to have it, have some of this stuff incorporated on the front. So, on page two oh four. Here, let us. Page two oh four, under commission. Uh, line three. Uh, when will the officers be chosen?
Um, I would assume the officers would be chosen at their first meeting. That would probably be one of their first agenda items, the officers for the commission.
Uh, can we add that? Can it say the, the month following the appoint or?
Because it says. Well, the officers for the commission or the committee, I have that on tonight.
Correct. But when someone new ones are elected, right? It's the two-year term now, uh, one, two-year and three-year terms. Annually then, you vote a new, well, we have president, vice president, secretary, whatever the three billings are. When will that election take place?
I, um, standard is always right around election time, spring election, about April is when we normally did it.
Right.
But it's not called out in the. But, but we can do it anytime. Go ahead, Dan.
So, um, the order, the agreement refers back to the state statute. And instead, the state statute that in combining or creating a new, um, department, then you appoint, each community appoints their commissioners, and then it's up to the commissioners at their first meeting, uh, among themselves. So the president is elected by the police commissioners themselves at their first meeting.
Understood. So one year from now, when the first one-year term drops off, what date or day?
Then, then it's the first meeting after April of the following year is the new election.
So it's written in the state statute, but it's not in here.
Yes, okay.
Very well.
I think another one, Jim, I, I don't know if you have it written down, but Jim and I were talking a little bit this weekend. Uh, one was on, uh, the, was it a minimum meetings of the commission and of the oversight board? So I, I think one was at least annually.
Right.
And I, and I think, I think that'd be an easy one to switch to, um, at least quarterly. I mean, our, our safer board meets every month. And so that's the Board of Directors of the safer. So maybe it's the, the overseen. I mean, I, I know it puts a little bit on the department. Um, we did not meet that frequently with EMPD, but I, I think sometimes we probably should have.
The way to answer that is that both the police commission and the oversight board can set their own rules.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay. And I know the chief, the chief can call to meetings. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
One of the things that Attorney Eady and I talked about was encouraging, uh, appointment of one member on the police commission who had prior law enforcement background. No one probably knows it feel better than someone who wore a badge. If you're in charge of hiring, firing, discipline. Probably makes sense, the guy who's gonna pick the police chief should know something about a cop, right?
And in our, our first roundup for our first year, um, Dan Burgeen is gonna serve one year.
Which is fantastic.
And I think after that, I think that's a very good point. I, I actually thought, uh, uh, an employed officer, but that we can't have that. So it has, but I think that would be a, a nice prerequisite.
And then with that, we had a note that no more than two members on the commission should serve that have prior law enforcement experience. The commission duties, I, and, and I get it, this is all like legal stuff that's taken from state statute and, and from the attorney that we all hired, but none of us are attorneys.
Yeah.
Right? And so if it has to be in here, because that's what the attorney said, it has to be that way. And you make the mechanic version so that the rest of us can read it. Like mission duties. We had kind of condensed and boiled that down to appoint, suspend, or remove the EMPD police chief. Appoint, approve all appointments by EMPD police chief. Again, this is talking to the prior agreement that we worked with, these would be different letters, but approve and control competitive examinations used to judge the suitability and appointment for subordinates. Approve each list of individuals determined eligible for appointment, suspend the police chief or subordinate, ending filing and hearing of charges against them. Hear charges against the police chief and, or any subordinates. Make findings into determinations and impose penalties. Hear appeals of disciplinary actions initiated by police chief against any subordinate and adopt rules for inducting meetings, basically organizational rules governing how conducts business along there. The rules do not conflict with state law.
So, um, everything you read there is the rules that are, um, in the state statute regarding police and fire commissions.
Sure.
So they, the police and fire commission is directly by state statute that they're authority. And everything you read in there, the, the records from the state statute.
Very well. Uh, page two oh five, how will vacancies be handled?
Um, vacancies, uh, commission and, uh, oversight?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, you want me to keep answering?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, in villages, those, um, appointments are handled by the, um, village president. Um, if you have in your ordinances that it needs, um, board approval, then you, then the president would make the appointment and the board would approve. But if you don't have that, then it's the, uh, village president has the autonomy to appoint those positions.
And so that new appointee would serve for the unexpired term?
So if you're, if you're the three-year oversight guy?
There's terms and, Jim, right now I don't remember what they are, how long it is, but it's in the statute how long those terms are.
So you would, uh, so the Village of Weston or Rothschild Board would appoint someone to
Right.
fulfill the remaining.
Right. And they're staggered. They're, they're staggered.
So, and I guess what you have to look at this is this is essentially a new entity. So everybody is gonna be new, even if you're seasoned and, uh, let's say the Everest Metro, either board or commission. This will be a whole new appoint, set of appointments.
Sure, but if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, somebody's gonna take my spot.
Right. Um, so typically what'll happen is that the board, um, president can appoint for one-year, two-year, and three-year terms.
So case in point, you know, somebody got hit by a bus last week. And, uh, Jamie and Ryan, uh, informed me that, uh, a, a, a current employee could not serve on the commission. And at first we thought that that, that a person could, uh, not being an officer. And so I, I asked both of them as village administrators to make the decision. Which way? I'll go either way, make the decision for the Weston side. And, uh, they decided that a, a current employee should not be on that commission. So we had that current employee. I talked to him about, you know, two months ago when this all started. And I called him up and I said, I'm sorry, but I've gotta take the sucker away and you can't be on the commission. And he was fine with that. And we pivoted and went to Jeff Mahalik. Am I saying that right?
Mahalik.
Jeff Mahalik is gonna serve in that position. And, um, but just like that, I mean, so if it's, you know, if you get hit by a bus, like you say, or move, uh, something takes you out of the state, we can pivot and do something else. Yep.
This evening, when you appoint those commissioners though, we could put the terms to, who would be your one, your two, and your three-year term to start your stagger when they are appointed, if they are appointed.
You want to keep some stability on those boards, you know, so that not everybody is, you know, just like our village board here, it's, it's half every year. Okay?
Um, yeah, I, I get it. You can make your own rules, but I, I think to your point, like we had talked earlier, the oversight board should be at least monthly.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't see any reason to meet less than that.
And your oversight board is the elected officials.
Right.
Yep. Okay. Two from Rothschild and three from Weston. Yes.
Um, there's no language that specifically calls out, um, publishing of the meetings of the committee and commission or the oversight committee as a as commission. I, I would like to see it published, well, the Village of Weston, Village of Rothschild, Town of Weston and City of Schofield, if they're involved, they're not in this charter, so I can't speak to that. Um, just as a regular board meetings are. And then with the same language that, that notices electronically delivered to the clerks of the respective communities. And now listen to what I'm saying for a far, that way they can post it all the places that we post stuff. So it's just like for my end meeting, right?
Jim, if I can, once again, um, those, um, are all regulated by the open records law, so they have to be.
Very well. Okay. And I'm not saying this stuff isn't in here in the state statute or that, that we're trying to go around it, but I feel like this is as zoomed out as it can be. And we could make it, I don't wanna say more strictly, but more specific, like asking for the oversight committee to meet monthly. I don't think that's unrealistic.
Yeah, and those are rules that the oversight committee can set.
Those are also rules that the Everest Metro Police Department Committee and Commission could have set, but did not.
Right.
Because it wasn't in the charter, they didn't have to do it. Yeah. Um, I would encourage a public comment period at all meetings of both the Oversight Committee and the Commission. And that to be placed on the agenda as such. I would ask that approved meeting minutes be provided. Again, this is state statute stuff, but I'm telling you, it's state statute right now and it doesn't happen. You can ask our clerk. We don't have all this stuff for all of the police meetings currently going back while we've got some of them, but it's not in here. It doesn't happen. Uh, page two oh six, number four, what is meant by the super majority language?
Uh, super majority language we put in there was, um, so let's say on the Oversight Committee, uh, the three Weston, uh, board members could not move something through. It has to have a Village of Rothschild, uh, representative, representative on there also. Same with the commission. So the commission has to be a five, a five ruling party to go through. Um, I believe also a meeting can't take place with only a simple majority of, it would have to be Weston both times. So Weston could not have a meeting because the four or the three showed up for Weston and Rothschild had other commitments or couldn't make the meeting. So that super majority was put in place to put some teeth in there so that each village would be represented, each community.
And I'm not against it. I just did not under, if you read paragraph four, I assure you, that's not what that says.
Okay.
It's, it's very difficult for a dumb mechanic to read.
Well, it, the act of a super majority, four out of the five members present, that's for that, has to happen. I mean, uh, could, could there be a few more words? Yes. Yes.
At a meeting in which a quorum is present shall be an act of the oversight board. Shall be the act of the oversight board.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense.
And we'll do the same thing, we'll do the same thing with, uh, five out of the seven.
I didn't see that in here, but I, I'm not against it. I'm just saying it didn't make sense to me. I'm not an attorney.
You know, uh, Jim, back there, can you hear us? Yep, okay. I just, not that I doubt Nate, but I sometimes don't think the speakers are working that well, so, good job, Nick.
Um, I assume that's what's standing out here, what the current budget of, uh, Rothschild EMPD is. That's what this document is in store here. Um, what was their budget for the last five years and was it a three percent increase as a three percent cap realistic?
Your budget last year increased was, I rounded, I think it was four and a half. Percent. For your budget.
Which sounds realistic, but we're capping it here at three percent, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Yep.
We believe we can.
I'm not saying we can't. I haven't seen any stuff. Again, I'm not against this merger. This is just the first I've seen any of this stuff. I may be the only guy that read all three hundred and fifty-seven pages. I don't know.
Well, I've been at every meeting. I've been, I've been, I read all.
Everyone I've been invited.
Yep. Hmm. You were invited several times. You were at several of the meetings. So, yep.
Yes, everyone I've been invited to.
I'm, I'm good, Jim. Just want you to continue.
Very well.
Hmm.
Has a labor agreement been drafted and when will this be available for review?
A labor agreement has been drafted. Uh, in terms of review, I think that would have to happen after, uh, my understanding after this merger will be complete in order to actually fulfill the union contract.
Boy, where are you at with the contract, though?
It's finished.
It's finished for the most part. It's just these between.
Contracts have been, uh, uh, completed by both Rothschild and Everest Metro. It went down to WPTA and they had to go through it to verify that all the information is legally correct in there. And as soon as that comes back, that will go to the finance committee and they're gonna, the ones that would have to approve it along with the officers to ratify the contract and make it legitimate.
The officers are part of that decision-making process.
Correct. So they have a union rep from each agency and they talked to all the officers. As a matter of fact, last Thursday, an email went out, uh, for their vote on it. Uh, and there has been no negative votes that have come back on it, so they all agreed.
Great. Good job.
Right now it's a three-year, but we still have some thought process on it. We might extend it all a little farther, so we're still working on.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, you know, before the vote, I, I will say, um, I've been kind of around several of these. I've heard about several of these mergers. And I think the one thing, the catalyst that we did, uh, different this year, and it's, it's gotta, either way, we do this for, forever, is every single entity was, was inside this. It wasn't just the politicians, it wasn't just the police, it wasn't just this. The union was involved, uh, the commissions were involved, the committees were involved, uh, trustees, uh, past, you know, chiefs were involved. You name it, every single piece was put into this so that everybody had a say. It was very transparent. Um, honestly, I don't think anything has ever gone this fast. I, I honestly think this will be a record. And, uh, I, I want to applaud everybody involved in this. I mean, you know, Jim, you were, from the get-go, we had several meetings with a lot of the different people and, uh, Jim and I serve on the, on the Joint Finance Committee. And, uh, but I mean, the commissioners were there. It just, uh, and then at the end, I, 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 for me, I don't know if Rothschild felt the same way, I truly wanted it to finish with Jamie and Ryan, the two administrators. Uh, I thought they worked extremely well together. Uh, I know one of the last meetings they had was with this Marfield attorney. And, uh, I think it came off really well. But enough said, uh, any more discussion? Steve?
Yeah. And I'm not sure if it, if Ryan, Jeremy, or Dan, which one of you wants to answer this, so feel free to jump in, but, um, I did receive a couple of phone calls, um, this weekend in regards to this. And one of the questions that kept coming up, especially from Weston residents is, is this gonna impact our level of service? I guess more so on how many, as far as staffing, and not only that, but, but the finances. So can you, with, I mean, the media's here and I'd like to kind of dispel some of that. So if one of you wants to take the lead and jump in.
You're welcome. So with the new, here, here's some of the benefits of it. It's gonna be approximately a forty-person, uh, sworn police department. So as an example, the Village of Weston pays, um, a little bit more than half of the total budget. Out of that half of the total budget, you get all the resources of all forty people. Plus what we can do now is because we have enough sergeants on, we can have twenty-four-hour supervision every day of the week, which is huge, especially when it comes to, to lawsuits. Is, because the number one lawsuit is failure to supervise. So we've got that covered with that staffing. I know from just being around now, the Rothschild officers who are coming into this are excited about having a larger territory to, um, patrol and be part of, um, and, and the Everest officers. If I could say it this way, I think at our last meeting last week, we heard a collective sigh of relief. Because they've been working their tails off, trying to keep this department going. You know, especially the Pat in here, well, I don't know when he sleeps, but he's probably gonna need an extra day after this is all said to catch up. So the benefits are gonna be, I think you'll, they'll be noticed to me.
And on the monetary side, there'll be no increase. Okay. Well, the budget stays the same this year. Uh, we do have an undesignated fund that's gotta get looked at a little bit. And, um, uh, we are gonna be, um, uh, you know, um, the judiciary will be out of, uh, Rothschild and the headquarters will be out of Rothschild building. And, uh, I think we'll need, uh, some of our building space over here for some storage for a while. And then we'll work out those details in the next, uh, three, four years. But I, uh, I am pumped.
The, the number of officers on staff at any one given time between the two departments will not decrease from what it is now.
Right now, as it sits, there's thirteen per day.
Okay.
Spread over a twenty-four hour period. So, like, the other thing is, is we're getting five school resource officers because we have two. So then they can cover the schools without having jurisdictional boundaries. And then there's the three detectives right now. But that's without a higher process to get us up to our total number. That's at thirty-seven. So there will be a lot more control over the street than in the event.
And we don't want to hire until, that we're gonna be hiring now Mountain Bay Metro employees. And so when that is effective, that's when those officers will come on board. But we, we have not had a full staff here with EMPD, I think, since two thousand sixteen. We've been running behind all that overtime and understaffed, and it's just been a real, a real tough battle. Um, Rothschild, I think you're at full, you know, what your budget is for.
We have thirteen.
You're one over. Yep. Yep.
Um, we had a department meeting with both departments last week. That was the first time in Everest Metro they had a meeting since two thousand eighteen. It was just surprising to me to get all staff in one room and have a conversation with everybody at one time. We try to do them twice a year, so it was amazing to me that it was two thousand eighteen, since they had a department meeting with everybody in one room.
There is.
Communication.
There's extreme, you know, mutual aid, uh, along fire E M, uh, E M Ts and police. But when you don't have a boundary issue like we've had in the past, that's gonna be a huge deal between Rothschild and these other three. So who knows, might be a few more joining here in the future. So I, I just hands off, uh, we, we gotta get to, to the vote here. If no, uh, go ahead.
I just, I mean, I'm not making a comment per se, but I just want to thank everybody that was involved.
Well, let's see if it goes through.
Yes.
Let's call the question. Somebody call the question.
I'll call the question.
Okay, so uh with, without any uh further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry unanimous, outstanding, outstanding, great job.
I assume that was on the motion to accept.
Yes.
With no changes. There were two motions provided back at it.
Okay, oh, I see, yep.
You're like specifying.
Yeah.
Point of order for future, uh, can we re, I actually read the motion before we vote?
Yep, go ahead. No, I, I'm a little excited there, sorry.
Yeah. My motion was um to approve the Police Protective Services Municipal Office, uh, court, no, is that the wrong one? Court Services Agreement with the Village of Weston. That was my motion.
It's with the village.
Village Rothschild.
The village.
The Rothschild.
Saying the village to.
Yeah, sure, we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Jamie, you'll.
Second.
Yep, second, okay. And uh, any more in discussion?
Please restate the motion.
Again?
Yes, because it changed from Weston to Rothschild.
Okay. Page two or bar two?
I move to approve the Police Protective Services and Municipal Court Services Agreement with the Village of Rothschild.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, same result, awesome. God, I'm gonna sleep good tonight. Man, oh man.
And I just wanted to, I wanted to thank everybody that was involved in this. Um, it's been a long time coming. I was on the board when we tried this once before and I was so optimistic. And it fell true and I didn't hope before it ever set. So thank you, everybody. And Dan, thank you for.
Thank you. All right, let's go here. Uh, uh, we're moving to six. Ad hoc public safety, no, no, no. Let's do the acknowledged reports minutes from board committee. We can go right to fourteen.
Yep, all right.
So parts and rec. Uh, we need acknowledgement of that or you want to talk? Thanks, everybody.
Reports from.
That we're gonna do.
Fourteen is copy of the minutes from our last meeting.
Move to acknowledge twelve, fourteen and sixteen concurrently, please. Motion by Pencil. Second by.
Hartinger.
Hartinger, thank you. Anything on the discussion? Carry none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls? So carry.
Haven't gone that long.
No, no, no. You just blew it.
Did you want number thirty-eight too?
Yes, I want thirty-eight now. We're gonna pull thirty-eight up right now.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Was your intent to have Sean give his report for twenty-three and a number before we talked about? On thirty-eight, is that what you're, what you were trying to do by fourteen?
I stand corrected, Sean. Want to give your report on twenty-three? So that's under a, or from departments. I think that'll dovetail right into the ARPA funds. Um, so we're, we're in the packet.
Yeah. Yeah, there are a couple of items in my report as far as uh orphaned items. Um, we have few items that are also in the bus for um consideration for Yellow Banks Park improvements um and funding. That was a discussion um, from last month's park committee meeting as far as improvements to the launch area and a parking lot for access to the river. Um, the second item is Spark Miller Park improvements, and that was a discussion where um, in the corp, we did designate, um, you know, some projects in there as far as each park and the future um, years that those might take place. Um, Park improvements uh included pickleball courts, um restroom shelter facility. Um, the third item is the um Kennedy Park fundraising effort, which right now, uh, we have a bunch of groups that are ready to start fundraising for improvements at Kennedy Park. Uh, but we did discuss at park committee level that um working with a marketing firm to put together a strategy, a plan, um, you know, helping us with the materials needed to participate in that fundraising effort would be uh beneficial to move us forward at this point. Uh, and then the final item was the roof panel project Sand Hill and Mock Miller Park. Uh, so those were some roof panels that have begun to fail. Uh, we did budget for them in the C I P. Uh, but we are short on that budget. Uh, I am meeting with contractor this week, actually tomorrow, uh, to go or possible removal installation of those roof panels um and possible funding. Uh, we were actually for that project, we're looking at uh possibly using park plan dedication funds for that project. Um, the other three are open for discussion as far as, you know, possible funding.
Okay.
Which brings us to.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Okay. Thirty-eight, update, possible action on the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds.
Okay, so the question is, how should the village Weston allocate remaining ARPA funds? Um, below is a list of the projects that have been mentioned and the remaining funds along with an allocation amount, amount for consideration. So um, I guess my recommendation to where I'd like to see the funds, um, so uh, we have yeah, that's a breakdown of it. So I'm not quite sure what the first four are. Um, besides holiday decorations. Uh, those haven't been brought up before, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
What's that what?
There's a pool a hundred percent.
As far as.
They're built pipes underneath it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was two thousand twenty-two. I mean, we did take care and finish that up in twenty twenty-three, so. No.
Go to page one ninety-six. And then there's a breakdown of everything. And then the remainder is the seven hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Police report, I thought, what the hell you doing with your purse on?
So that's what we have to spend in this. This is the breakdown of suggested um areas to put that funding. So I guess um when being sheriff parks, I'm, I'm looking at um twenty-five thousand for the master plan development marketing. And I believe uh you've met with one marketing firm, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, and um I guess giving some second opinions, twenty-five thousand dollars isn't um, really out of budget for that. Um, but maybe we could go ahead and request an RFP to get a couple of other proposals.
Yeah.
Um, I would also like to see another twenty-five thousand go into um another uh marketing firm for Mock Miller. Uh, because that project alone is one point five million, correct?
What are you thinking? It's uh one point two started that, but I think Shane, you're thinking with all the other stuff, it's closer to one five?
I think so. The, the number they had thus, thus close, but there is no engineering fee or construction in there.
And just as a reminder, Jessica, what's left in our box? Seven hundred, seven fifty?
It's up on the screen.
Seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred sixty-six.
Again?
Seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred sixty-six and one second.
Thank you.
And what is this total request you have put together, Jamie?
It's way more than that.
Way more.
Sorry.
Way more.
Yeah.
It's way more than that.
Wait, it's, it's, it's how.
You have to pick, you have to pick this apart.
It's how we're gonna allocate the seven sixty-six.
Recommendation of the Parks Committee.
So, right here. Well, only, so, so I'm, I'm thinking twenty-five thousand dollars for a marketing firm for both Mock Miller and Kennedy. Okay, um, another hundred thousand uh for the engineering, uh Kennedy Park Master Plan Development Engineering. I believe that's something that uh we need on our end. So, um, and then Mock Miller Park, that's open. Uh, Kennedy Park Master Plan, I'd like to see at least a half a million uh go to that to show the stakeholders of the village has an invested interest in this project. Um, like you know, said, it's going to create energy and get local sponsors to buy in.
I agree, Kenny Parks, we want to focus that we have.
So let's just work this backwards. So five hundred, uh, we've got a hundred for engineering on Kennedy. Six, we got twenty-five and twenty-five, that's six fifty.
Correct.
Uh, now pickleball, Mock Miller, is that probably next? Uh, Mock Miller Park? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, I'm because the latter's, the latter's out.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Um.
We wanted to add one more to the list just for consideration.
Sure.
And that's the improvements that were made to EMPD last year. We would have to borrow for that this year. And that was about a hundred and ninety thousand.
So it's not taken out of this yet?
That would not be, but it's just another item for consideration because it, we would be borrowing for an asset that essentially we wouldn't be utilizing to that full extent. It would, it would make it so we wouldn't have to borrow for that.
So we, the improvements we already made, or we're going to make.
No, the improvements we already made were about a hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Might have come out of this yet.
They don't have to come out of this, but we will have to borrow for them.
Yeah. So whatever we don't approve with ARPA funds, we're probably gonna borrow if the board decides it's a project we want.
So my next question would be of that seven hundred and sixty-six thousand change. What else do we have to borrow again? Or anything else that's sitting out there that hasn't been taken out of that number yet? Is that it?
Well, no, the other items we weren't gonna borrow for. They were in the, so the board adopted a C I P plan last year. It was adopted in like two minutes, but um we did have a nice plan, uh, really made up.
You're so good with your do, Jessica.
We had a really nice plan made up that we are going to be revising and coming back with it, but that's where the biggest thing I guess, I want you guys to think about is what can we spend? It's not where do you want to spend it. I need it spent by the end of the year or else the signed contracts. So that's, that's what we have to think about. I mean, it could be a project the board wants to do, we can borrow for it. But what we have to think about, what can we get done or have a definite signed contract by the end of the year?
So if you're better out borrowing for the hundred grand that we use to.
It doesn't matter because it's, it's robbing Peter to pay. So whatever the board agrees, we can get that.
Not necessarily, then we spend a hundred thousand less on this.
Yeah, it, it's just that you're, that hundred thousand you already invested and that asset will be used differently. We're gonna use Kennedy Park for the next hundred years, right?
No, I'm not saying it's not worth it.
That's how you think about it. I'd rather borrow for something I'm gonna have use of and the community's gonna use over the next ten years.
Borrow five hundred or something for Kennedy, when we go to eight?
Barb? Well, I guess, I know this is off the wall, but we allocated ARPA funds for the safer. Uh, safer for uh metro, as a metro. Why couldn't, being this is what it was done for, I mean, the remodeling, couldn't we use some of that funds to, to pay off this?
The safer, the, the EMPD ARPA funds have been spent already.
Well, that is what we're just.
They're not?
Um.
I, I thought, I thought fire is not spent.
That's different.
I just, so safer was treated differently. They asked for it and then we paid them. Um, Everest Metro, they did their bonus, we paid them. And then at the end of last year, I decided just to give them a big check. So I do not officially believe they spent all.
Why don't we declare what that is?
That was not, that was not kept track of.
I know, but.
Okay, but we.
But why, why can't we pull it out of the undesigned fund? Right on.
MP that, the remodeling of that.
So now that building is done, there's no borrowing for that. My, my next question is to Jim. Olsen?
I don't, I don't know that we can pull it out of undesigned.
Okay.
It's safer funds, I think, the joint finance.
No, no, EMPD funds.
EMPD.
Yeah, but we don't know what we're gonna do with all the committees. Just real quick, you, you made a comment uh during your um public comment on um to, to have something put in first. What do you, what do you, what's the dollar number in your mind?
So, um, on the Redler plan, that yield being added would be above a million dollars. However, if you take a handful of I'm out into lights, handful of other things, that reduces significantly. And we all agree that some of those dollar amounts are inflated because the way the plan was created, they expected you to do it for three to five to ten.
Yep.
So we really believe that when you can create that brother field that's all on three, or between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars, when you take it out.
But, but your, your question though, or your comment to the board was that the first money should come in from the village.
Right.
How much?
Well, we would really like to start with five hundred thousand dollars because that type of investment makes our job as fundraisers so much easier. We know that it's a large project, something that's been talked about in the community for a long time. And there's community members that understand that this has come through the process through different times. We failed.
So would that be?
We have the investment, I think, the.
It would be a catalyst for the rest. Okay, would that be, so in other words, if we earmark five hundred thousand for Kennon?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
All right.
You have twenty-five thousand for the marketing.
Yeah, Steve. I have a couple of things here. Number one, Chief Finkie, how many, how much of your ARPA funds do you have left?
Um, I'm gonna estimate about a hundred, probably right around a hundred thousand.
Would there be any objection to putting some of those funds towards the, the building renovations that we did for the signage? You can be honest.
Um.
Or do you have something else in mind for that?
No, I don't. I just gotta, I am using some of those funds currently to finish that training structure that we built.
Okay.
Um, so I just gotta figure out exactly where I'm at. It's actually my list of things to do this week because the bill just came yesterday for the building part of it. And I have one bill that I'm waiting for yet, and I can probably give you a better answer to that once I get those numbers done.
Is, is there, is there a way we can get that undesigned fund from the MPD?
I don't know. Is that something where we would have to ask the communities now that are in EMPD to take it out of those funds? Because they would be, it would be joint finance funds.
Right. Yeah, they're not the village funds anymore.
So it probably would be.
But we've got members on the commission and uh, well, I should say the joint finance.
Would be, I think it would be.
It'd be the joint finance that we're on, that we could make that claim. And uh, uh, we don't need to bring all that money over into the merger. I mean, if we brought five hundred thousand over, we would definitely have a hundred and ninety left to pay that bill. I don't think that's an issue. I think if we brought five hundred thousand over into the merger, I, I've heard it said by the chief, by Dan, by the commission members, that that would, even Ryan, that that would suffice. Uh, we don't have building plans for three or four years. And I, I think that would uh, that'll at least take care of the one ninety, because the one ninety is a surprise. Um, Steve, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I had a couple of other small points. So, um, I'm not opposed to earmarking a whole bunch of this money to help get that project off the ground. But I, and I know I talked with Jim specifically about this, but one of the things in that fourteen million dollars was seven hundred thousand dollars in mobilization fees. So to your point, I understand the urgency to get that field done, but I would rather save seven hundred thousand dollars, have them mobilize once and do the whole thing at one time. That's a lot of money. Um, so that's one point. The second point, you had asked for twenty-five thousand in funding for Mock Miller. I underst- I understand doing a marketing campaign for Kennedy because it's a huge project. It's for, I mean, right now it's estimated at fourteen million, which I still think is high, but Mock Miller we're only looking at one point five. So I guess my question would be, is it necessary to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to hire a marketing consultant for a number that is significantly less?
Well, it ranges from twenty-five to fifty, so I just pick an average number.
That's Kennedy, right?
Right. We haven't, we haven't gotten any, we've only got one proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to get, but if we have that money set aside, then.
Do you, do we think we needed to have it set aside for Mock Miller?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it for Kennedy. I don't know if I'm for spending twenty-five thousand dollars on a marketing campaign for Mock Miller. Um, the last thing that I have, I, there's a list here of things to consider. I personally am not in favor of the top three at all. I'd rather see this go towards things that are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna just up till it, just one minute, you know, so uh, on Steve's thought, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna. Pull any punches here, um, we've been talking about these ARPA funds for a while. This is not something that we all just jumped in here, even the one ninety I'm a little disappointed on. Um, this last bark, a bit of the ARPA funds was for smiles. Nothing on here is for smiles, uh, maybe staff might smile for some of the stuff, but the smiles for our community are gonna be our parks. That's where it's gonna hit, so if we can throw that one ninety for the public, pull it out of uh, EMPD, undesigned, that's great. But otherwise, I, I wouldn't vote for anything on here other than park stuff, period. And uh, so yeah, top three are gone, I'm gonna throw the holiday decorations with that too, we gotta find funding somewhere else. Um, apparently we found some uh here, uh, the twenty-five for Kennedy Park, the five hundred for Kennedy. Um, and I, I wanna say at that point, you can split the rest with Yellow Banks and Mac Miller.
For the engineering is.
Yeah, I got the hundred there to five hundred at six, six point nine, you got a, another a hundred and forty thousand. Um, what's gonna be the biggest bang for your buck, is it Yellow Banks or is it Mac Miller, I know Husheng. Uh, on, on the pickleball, there's five hundred members in the, in one of the pickleball fields, I was shocked when I found that out.
Yes, it's growing.
I was absolutely shocked to hear five hundred.
Yeah.
And it's a different demographic, so we have.
Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Make a motion to designate the remainder of the ARPA funds balance. To improvements for the Kennedy Park project to include master plan development, engineering, marketing, et cetera.
Would you, uh Pam, would you mind summarizing that please? I'm sorry, I know you've heard, but.
What, what?
We've kinda gone through it a couple times.
The numbers?
What, yeah, which, which ones we're going with specifically?
Your motion is the entire balance.
Seven six six one six six point oh one.
Whatever that number, seven six six one six six zero one.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second uh to that motion, so what Jim is saying is seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. Dollars and one cent is gonna go to the Kennedy Park uh, Kennedy Park project. So the top four items on this list are out. Um, you know, so Mac Miller is out at this, at this time, it's all Kennedy and the ladder truck is gone and yellow, Yellow Banks is gone.
Well, what about the one ninety earmarked for?
The one ninety, we're gonna pull out of uh, undesigned funds from the EMPD.
Yep. And we can use grant funds for Yellow Banks.
You still have to have them match for Yellow Banks, but we would, we'll have to determine that if we're.
We're gonna work that out.
We'd put on the CIP then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, and we, yeah, we already spent this all money, so we can't throw a hundred grand to Yellow Banks that way.
One quick question on your motion.
Yes.
Do you want to split that out between those three items? So that you're only allowing X amount of dollars to be spent for fundraising, X amount for engineering? I, I guess, I don't, I don't wanna just give the money out and then suddenly we're spending fifty or seventy-five dollars, not to say that anybody's gonna do that, but.
We just follow the step, will you?
All contracts will be coming back.
Yep, just real, real quick, Sean.
That's what I was gonna say, all contracts come back.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah, they gotta come back to the committee.
Deal.
Yeah, so um. I, given what Jim just moved, I, I don't really have anything to add. Want to ask some discussion, I, I just, I just, I love to say.
Yeah.
Let's, let's vote.
Instead of contributing cash to the pickleball. I would suggest we use the base course from crush gravel we have in there. That's a good chunk. Also. They were gonna build a bathroom facility in there anyway, I think they should do that and also they were gonna build the. A million.
Don't, don't forget the thirty percent from our uh, our hotels. We have thirty percent that is going uh, that we decide what we wanna do with it, I believe it's CIP. We have forty percent that goes to the CVP, and then we have thirty percent that our community gets to decide where it goes. Now, in the past, we've, we've gone to all different things, but in the past, we've done two hundred thousand dollars to the uh, Green Heck uh Turner uh Center. Uh, again, we did another two hundred, so that's four hundred, I believe there's another seventy-five that we did.
Yeah, I think all he was four seventy-five.
I think it was four seventy-five total, nobody has matched that other than individuals, but not a municipality. And those are revolving funds that come every year.
Yeah.
So we have those funds available because to, the pickleball will be tourism, Kennedy Park will be tourism, baseball will be tourism, skate park will, well, Dino will be. But um, you know, the pool, I'm just teasing, of course, but I mean, so you know, we've got those funds. That those can, you know, help this along and help this process along. And uh, it's gonna look like we're a little selfish, but not really because all the communities couldn't come here and, and enjoy those facilities. Uh, all the different things that Weston has to offer, so um, I, I would, I um, we got a motion on the floor, any more discussion?
Yes, I guess I'm, I'm looking at these projects and Kennedy Park Master Plan, we had eight hundred thousand, so you're gonna add another. Seven hundred?
This, this is a wish list, this whole list is a wish list, so if you add that whole list up, it's two or three million, uh, maybe not. Uh, yeah, ladder truck one six, um, yeah, it's about three million dollars. So this is a wish list that we can apply seven hundred sixty-six thousand. The motion that Jim has made and Jamie has seconded is all seven six six one six six point oh one goes to Kennedy. And with uh, Jessica and Sean talking, all contracts will come in front of us. Uh, Husheng, one more time?
I think that eight hundred thousand for master plan, I don't quite understand.
That, that's.
What kind of a master plan gonna take eight hundred thousand?
Yeah.
It's the implementation.
Yeah, that, that's the implementation of it, so that's the building of a field, there's the bathrooms, the parking lot, the implementation of the plan. I mean, that's essentially what Jim's motion was, is the.
Okay, we have the master plan, it's just.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, are we good?
So what are we doing, that money, the, the forty, the ten thousand?
Nope, those are gone, those are gone.
Okay, where is that money going?
That's the first order.
It's not.
First order.
That's a wish list, that's a wish list. All this was, was just some ideas on where we're gonna, where we could spend seven hundred sixty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, you don't, don't have.
We don't have to spend all this, I mean, some of these things might be necessary, some might be unnecessary if we don't do evolve, so.
Okay.
All right, um, so you call in a question?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. All right, let's get back in order here, good job, everybody.
Sean, can I ask?
You're gonna pick a part?
Yeah.
Is it right now? Is there any urgency on your end to get that, to kind of piecemeal that project, or would it be okay if we just did the whole thing at once?
Actually, piecemeal would be much better off, um, because we don't wanna stop playing baseball for a year, for years.
Okay.
For this project, you know, uh, since the way the plan was laid out, we can actually build two fields. Before we actually have to tear down several other fields, so I don't know that if uh, if there was a. If it was the entire part plan, I don't know that that would actually be better than the plan set out by Redler.
Jennifer. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Sean, so.
You good?
All right, let's um, somebody hold my hand here and bring me back to.
Reports from departments, administrator, please.
Uh, nineteen, yes, there we go, any uh, her report, administrators' report is in the packet, any questions? Or do you wanna add? Jamie's been everywhere this last month, everywhere, I actually think there's, you spend more time everywhere, I don't know how, like, what. Are you home or what? She's everywhere, so that's, it's just outstanding. Again, a great job hiring our new administrator, so I just wanna, got everybody on the back, yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thanks very much.
Sean, you staying or you leaving, what are you doing? Oh, okay, right. All right, so Jamie, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, unless there are questions.
Any more, any questions of uh administrators? Nope, uh clerk, anything you wanna add?
Just, I wanna just reiterate that we're starting in-person absentee voting tomorrow and it'll run all this week through next week. And we also are implementing Saturday morning.
When are you opening up?
Tomorrow morning, we start at eight thirty, it's eight thirty to four, but Saturday morning will be open from eight to noon, just in case anybody can't make it. Um, during the weekday.
Awesome, exciting.
Super excited about Saturday.
All right, uh, let's see twenty.
We work Saturdays cuz we get to go through three hours.
All right, uh, twenty-one finance, anything more you wanna add, any questions for Jessica? Thank you all, yes, you do, go ahead.
With the updated CIP, will that rework the, the park expenditure planning?
Yeah, so currently a lot of that wasn't even in the CIP plan, so. What we just approved, it wasn't really touched in the CIP plan, so we'll have to see what we need to add after we. Apply to ARPA, so obviously if Kennedy is not gonna be fully funded with ARPA funds, we need to add portions of it.
We had a placeholder for Kennedy but no numbers because we were waiting to see where the master plan came back up.
Yeah. Good, thank you, uh, Josh, Chief Finkie.
Uh, the only thing I have to add to my report is I kinda mentioned earlier, the training facility is uh, done on the interior. Um, they hopefully will be working on the exterior that either this week or next week, some stairs have to be built and then safety railings have to be put around the outside of it. But uh, we should be up and training on that here fairly soon, um, and then we will be burning a house in Rib Mountain here. Scheduled for April third, we moved the date today, I believe it.
By the one by bricks? Do you have a grandstand, ice cream and a fire or no?
I don't know if bricks will be open quite by then.
All right, all right.
Do you think, what exactly are you able to uh, what are your improvements with that training facility?
So it got built out on the inside, um, so there are uh, let's see, a bathroom, a simulated bathroom, two bedrooms. And then a kitchen, kind of an open concept type kitchen, and then there is uh, two rooms upstairs. And then um, we will build out our own confined space prop in there this summer. And then on the outside, there is uh, the parts were just put in for a roof prop. And then we just, we just had to bolt the wood into it and do the actual roof yet for ventilation training, so there'll be inside and outside training props.
Where'd you do this training prior to that facility?
Where did we?
Yes.
We. We didn't really, I mean, we would do it in the apparatus bay as best we could, but we didn't really do it otherwise. Um, deal, otherwise, when we had houses like we do right now, we would train heavily in them, but sometimes you wouldn't have one then for two or three years.
Okay, good, well, good job.
Thanks.
Uh, anything else, no, anymore? Thank you, uh, let's see, park and rec, we did, uh, plan development, Jen, anymore from you?
Uh, well, I'm just gonna tell you about the ten-five that was on there, um, basically back a few months ago. Uh, we were requested to look into the public facing side, the landing page for Evolve. So that ten-five is a quote for updating the public facing side and all the modules, so. Not sure if you have any direction on that now.
Michael might have some more room in his salt budget for the year.
Yeah, so that's a sore subject, I beat that thing to death, I beat that to death, so. I think it about six more feet of water later, yeah.
Well, it was here and then it was supposed to be talked about, so that's, so I'm not sure exactly. We are looking at City Works tomorrow, which is something that Michael suggested, um, that would be potentially a change of.
Where, where?
Programs for everything.
Who else uses City Works? Isn't somebody else around here has City Works?
A lot of communities use Evolve that I know of, I'm not familiar with City Works.
City Works is more of, more of a full GIS integrated um, asset management software system. You know, we'd be able to implement, not just, you know. What I would say, between Evolve, our GIS system that our utility operator staff uses and then also our asset management for the building. We've got three different softwares, uh, City Works would be capable of doing it all within one software.
What does Madison use?
They might use City Works, I'm not sure.
And I'm just not sure exactly how.
I mean, Madison, to me, interstate would be the most in-depth.
Yeah.
On uh, on that kind of media, so.
We have a demo tomorrow to see because the website doesn't, I mean, it is an Esri based product, so it would be with the GIS, so it could.
So with all the, the stuff you're doing, would he just implement all that into the City Works or what do you mean?
Yeah, so it takes all the data that we already have and it makes it so it's more usable.
It could cross over to a different, okay, all right, and we can use it even though we're not a city?
Yes.
Little cities nowhere, little cities nowhere, not much. Sorry.
Um, the, because those are five hundred dollars for Revolve that we talked about, that's just the cost to upgrade the modules, not our annual fee.
No, that's not the annual fee, no, we already paid that for the year, so this would be on top of it for.
What is the annual fee for the year?
What is it monthly?
Is it forty for?
The annual fee for Revolve?
Yeah.
It's seventeen-five.
Oh, I thought that was forty.
Well, that's a heck of a deal, from forty to seventeen-five, see?
But forty thousand would include whatever you use for GIS and whatever you use.
So the, that forty thousand dollar fee that was on there from City Works?
Yeah.
That's a migration fee, a one-time migration fee to bring all your data over into the City Works application.
Was the cost of City Works.
And then the annual cost of City, City Works depends on which modules you purchase and add in. I would guess it would be, I think the last thing we looked at was like twenty-eight-five. Um. City Works is.
Covers three.
Yeah, City, but City Works, I mean, it, it is kind of the. Um, it's, but they've been in the game a long time, they, you know, they're uh, they're owned by Trimble now, which is the GPS.
It's like the top surveying, survey equipment.
All right, can I have, that might have to come back to us at a future.
Am I, am I, yep, just Jim.
We're just starting to look at it, but I wanted to bring back the fact that we got the call.
I think anything more friendly, people, so, more usable.
For sure, um, when was the last contact made with the uh, So Water Landing Park, one requesting an updated timeline to complete the street improvements?
Still water?
Still water?
It was after the last meeting. Yeah, it's coming up on each end.
With the water main. Replacement.
Okay, we can talk about it then, that's fine.
All right, anymore, Jen? Any more to the board?
I got one quick question, uh, Jen, in your packet, you have that the signs were put up at fifty-five hundred, are we gonna be taking those down, huh?
We're not gonna take them down until the sale is, yeah, I'll leave them up until everything is done.
Sure.
Dirty dusty roads, I'm a wrestler, you know? He has a locker, okay. Uh, police, I think you should just stand up, take a bow and sit back down. Captain Aldridge has been absolutely remarkable over the last couple of months. And uh, he do- doesn't, uh, he actually, I don't think he actually likes to hear it when I say it or others say it to him. But I commend you on what you've been doing, how you've handled yourself, your professionalism, it's, it's unbelievable. And uh, I, I can't say enough, uh, one of the meetings I was at over at the municipal or at the courthouse. Um, his wife, uh, actually they were out and he came in for a, a quick meeting and she was in there with her two kids and I felt. I compelled to walk up to her, uh, we were in there for probably forty-five minutes and I told her, I, I just can't wait. Until I don't have to call your husband anymore, and you get him all to yourself, and she just stared at me like I was half nuts, but I said, I mean it. I'm not gonna add a certain point here, I'm not gonna call him anymore, and uh, anyway, so I hope she thought that was pretty good, so. Anyway, but great job, if you wanna add something or somebody has any questions for Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have uh, two quick things, uh, flock, we have two cameras that are installed and we already have one case installed. Do the flock already, so it's.
Two coming in or four total?
We, we have four total, we have two installed.
All right, um, I, if I don't, Louis, how many does Wausau have? I, yep, and, and the county has some too, and they all dovetail, right? They all work together, yeah, I think that is really neat, so when we're installing them, that company or you talk to Wausau and say. You're already covering this area, so we're gonna cover this area, right?
So they, so the system, like, we can actually log in and.
Right.
Use our cameras too.
But I mean, you wouldn't wanna go and, you know, put a camera on the same corner they're at, you know?
Right.
So you, we're, we're, we're total, every time another one comes into our area, it's, it's another area that we're looking at, good, that's awesome. And, and you already got a, a case out of it, good.
And then uh, Nate Crowe was over last week and we now have access on two of our computers to the. Amarin at the skate park.
Okay, neat, very good, thank you very much, I can't help the way I am, but you, we have four and you have twenty. Um, have we ever talked to see if we're being billed the same? I mean, I would imagine twenty is the better deal, so shouldn't we kinda say our four are kinda with Louis and we should get their deal? I mean, seriously, we should, you know, Rothschild I think has one or two and Red Mountain, I, I know Red Mountain has two, I think for sure.
And I, I don't think Rothschild has any.
Yeah.
Red Mountain, they have two.
I, I, Red Mountain has a couple cuz Fred Schaefer said they'd had them, yeah, so ju- just if, I can't help it, you know, I'm discount, so anyways. Great job, great job, absolutely great job, um, any else, no more on the police, uh, Public Works?
You just ramble or?
No, oh, you're calling me a ramble?
I, I ramble, S G, no.
Wow, he sneaked that one in here.
No.
Me, I, I, I heard him whisper, Maloney's a rambler, and he said rambler louder, so.
Oh, like we had, Jamie had a meeting with the Rotary Club of Wausau today and, uh, she's like, you'll be able to talk. I was like, sure, I can ramble for a minute, forever, if you just put me in front. I'm talking about myself. Because I love my job so much and talk about the village. It's great. We've got a lot of awesome things going on here.
You do, you, you do love your job, right?
I do, yeah.
Cause I think you.
Dead serious, yes.
No, I do, I, I, I do think you do, good.
Coworkers make fun of me.
What's that?
My coworkers will make fun of me.
Oh, to heck with them. Stand alone, man. Walk your own lane, that's alright.
I guess really the main thing is, uh, besides all the C I P and maintenance projects, we are looking to fill a public works, uh, position. Our internal street, um, operators took the job with the utility crew. So, uh, we did have interviews last week and, uh, I believe we'll be offering a person this Wednesday, whilst they still want to work here, so.
Super, okay.
And then the staff engineer position, uh, like we'll have interviews, uh, first week of April. I'll be gone for spring break next week, so.
Good. You're gonna be gone for spring break?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to see on the news.
Alright.
Alright.
Hi, just a quick question. You had mentioned that you had a meeting with the state regarding, state or county regarding Camp Phillips between Schofield Avenue.
Yeah, so that was where, I think, I think that was last month, we brought that back, uh, you guys approved, uh, up to five thousand for the traffic count study. Uh, the county kind of wants to look at that corridor to see if the existing footprint is okay or potentially we would need to have some kind of right away acquisition through there too, so.
Uh, from, from Weston?
From Schofield Ave to like Weston Ave.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let's go.
Kind of right on the highway twenty-nine interchange area there, so.
Yeah, good. Alright, thank you, uh, Nate, technology.
I don't have anything to add to the report.
Do a job on, on pairing that up for the police and the cameras, awesome. Alright, work product transmittals, twenty-eight, acknowledge February building permits and twenty-nine, acknowledge, uh, February budget status. All the same, or separate from departments? Uh, there you go, uh, by Pincinot. Keep me, by, uh, Ermling, thank you. Uh, any more, any more on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Motion to acknowledge twenty-eight, twenty-nine. I'll take the second.
I'm just gonna, nope, I wanna do over, go ahead, start over.
Which one is it?
Do it again. You made me do it again, so go ahead.
Move to acknowledge twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
By Pincinot, second by Cronin. Uh, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, consent agenda.
Approved, item thirty-one, approved vouchers.
Uh, by Ermling.
Second.
Second by Cronin. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, ordinances thirty-three, ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six point one zero zero entitled Schofield and Weston Joint Municipal Court to Rothschild Area Municipal Court. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance two-four dash zero zero three.
By Cronin, second by Wyland. Any more in the discussion?
Yes.
Go.
Yeah, um, the contracts for printers, copyers, utilities, telephone services, internet, all that jazz. Um, we have, those be terminated May thirty-one, yes.
Uh, May thirty-one.
Should be moved to May one, so give it till the end of the month. There was like a two-week buffer, but.
How long do you need in the open? Or I mean, court, court, isn't court closing the end of April and then we were giving them to the tenth to get everything over, right?
It can be that the, the judge's term ends at the end of April, yes, and we wanted them to have a little time to close out things.
Finish up, yeah.
But the, the pieces as far as the copy machine and those, we've already looked into getting those.
So it's already turned off.
Yeah, it's, it's already on our radar.
Yep.
Okay. The reason I ask this is because we paid for utilities at a building that's getting knocked out for like a year and a half.
Right.
Yep, without turning the gas.
Yep.
Yeah, and I mean, the town will still be utilizing that space, that's our.
Yeah, we don't have to turn the heat off, but we can, we can send a.
Certain spots.
Yep. Need for that.
We, we're good on that.
Thank you.
Okay. And no, hearing no more on discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, resolutions thirty-four, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash zero zero four. Preliminary resolution for Weston Avenue, Von Kennel, the Ryan, and cross-country utility route progress way to County Road J, special assessments. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve resolution twenty-two-four double oh four.
By Pincinot, second by Ermling. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thirty-five, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash zero zero five. Preliminary resolution for East Jelnik, County Road X, Temesker, and Von Kennel, Schofield Avenue to Barbican Avenue, Ken Can Two, special assessments.
Move to approve resolution two-zero-two-four double oh five.
By Cronin, second, second by Pincinot, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, Jen, you didn't get it, huh? Thirty-six, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash zero zero six, adopting the Weston elementary safe routes to school plan.
Move to approve.
By Zagami.
Second.
Second by Hardinger. Hearing, uh, anything else on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thirty-seven, resolution number two-zero-two-four dash zero zero seven. Authorizing a resolution for urban non-point source and stormwater grants for business fifty-one Storm Pond. By Zagami.
Second.
By Hardinger, anything on the discussion? Michael, is that, uh, that thing by Rothschild, that big circle thing? Really? That's pretty cool.
So, yeah.
That's really cool.
This just gives me authorization to actually submit and work with the D N R ticket.
Yeah, that's, that's an awesome use of, of land that you would use, yeah.
Would this start before the business fifty-one reconstruction?
Yeah, uh, that'd be the goal. It's, and that's the discussion I had with the D O T last week is, uh, they said, well, the project's not until twenty-twenty-eight, so why do you need anything right now? I said, well, we want to get this built.
Yep.
Now, like our pipe currently runs, we have a sixty-inch storm sewer pipe that runs through there. Like, we, we can do this project now, we don't need, like, you know, the state to rebuild the road first, so.
I think that's fantastic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, unfinished business, uh, we got first one done. Uh, update on goals for twenty-three to teach final.
We've been including those into the.
Okay, yeah, and I've been seeing that. Uh, we got forty, forty-one done, yay, forty-two, discussion and or action on modifications to the employee personnel policies and procedures handbook, section ten point zero eight, management of requests through the administrator. You gotta be more quiet over here, bud. Okay, thank you. What's your pleasure?
Um, I moved the, the modification to the Village of Weston Employee Personnel Policies and Procedures Handbook, section ten point zero eight regarding management of requests through the administrator.
Motion by Ermling, second by Cronin. Any more in discussion, Jim?
Yes, uh, page two thirteen, new letter B.
Two thirteen?
Here are three letter B.
Okay.
What is that? What's an example of that? Document not, a document exempt from this.
He just wants an example.
An example might be, uh, employee personnel items.
Oh, perfect, yeah, um, and then two thirteen, three C, should every trustee's, uh, the S, right, where that mouse is.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have an S on the end of it.
I can add that.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation to amend the motion, is that how you do that?
Before you do that, I have a question that I'd like.
Send it.
Is that okay? Um, on the same thing, um, number two, D, the administrator will discuss with the board president, the number of requests, legality of requests. Board may impose limitations on volume scope and timing of information requests, other than public records requests by board members. I guess my concern is, I just don't, and I'm not saying anybody's gonna do this, I just don't want us to get in the habit of saying, I want this information, now I'm gonna file a public record request.
By a trustee?
By a trustee.
Really? Well.
Well, and I'm not, I don't mean to throw shade here, Jim, but that did happen a month ago, that email got sent to myself and Jamie. Regarding the client commission documents.
But I didn't say it had to get done today.
No, but I, I just, I just don't want the boards to be inhabited, using that to get information immediately.
No, 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 that was not my intent, the intent of my email at all.
So, I don't know if you.
I, I think the, I think the general, um, census of reacting to requests. You know, we can get into a standard mode of just jumping and jumping and jumping and we can't get nothing done. And I think we were in that mode for a while. And, um, I've often said to staff, you know, you, don't get taught, and, and not, and I do it too. But don't let someone teach you or school you on how often. I used to tell that to Keith all the time. And then some of them came from you. I said, just because he asked it doesn't mean you have to answer it today or tomorrow. Give it a week, give it two weeks and, and set the standard of when that response is gonna come. Otherwise, we're not gonna get nothing done. And if we had several people doing that, it'd be really wild. So, and I think some of the stuff that we talked about at the last meeting about responses going to Jamie or including Jamie in them, and that's what I've done now at a couple of times. I just think it's gonna work better, I really do. And, um, and, and we can always bring this up, we can always have this on the agenda to talk about it again, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, I guess that, like, as you know, I've had talked to you different kinds of.
Talk to me, yeah, talk to me, harshly talk to me, yes, several times, but, but I.
We can't.
Yep.
Keep going, every board member going to an employee, making requests, we have to have a central location in order to make, not to say you couldn't make the request, but we could just log down the employees to the point where they were not functioning and there was a municipality that's one of the reasons they can't keep employees.
Well, I, I'm not pointing fingers because when I came on for the third time, I was the worst. And an, another person with me, we were horrible and, uh, um, so I, I'm not pointing fingers because I've done it and, and I realize that that's just. You know, I've been called the micromanager a few times, maybe I have been, and, uh, but I'm trying, I'm learning to back up a little bit and let people do their job. You know, we got a guy over here that says he loves his job, let him do his job, you know, so, I agree.
I agree, I think all of us have been, probably been guilty of it.
Well, you know, we, we felt, you know, we get on board, we think we're gonna jump in here and, uh, yeah. And, you know, I tell you, I, I would have a hell of a time if I had to always have seven, uh, elected bosses over me and, and here I have all this schooling and a guy that used to be in a grocery store and now he sells fruit and vegetables, you know, is, is, uh, got the, the, wouldn't get a ballot, so, or a wooden mallets, anyway. Alright, do we have enough on this?
This is a good.
Can we move forward on this? Are we, uh, where am I?
You wouldn't need the amendment, not for that S.
Very well, okay, we're good. So, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, that was forty-two, forty-three. Discussion and or action on modifications to the employee personnel policies and procedures handbook, section ten point one nine. Identification badges, keys, access cards, and any other way to get in the building. Forty-three, and, uh, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve the modifications of the Village of Weston Employee Personnel Policy and Procedure Handbook, section ten nineteen regarding I D badges, keys and access. As presented.
By Pincinot.
Second.
Second by Wyland, on the question.
Who's monitoring that? Is that Nate?
Nate. I am currently, but we're currently in the process of creating a plan where we would have multiple points of.
But you'll be, you'll be tracking it, you'll be in charge of this basically till somebody else takes over?
Yeah, we, we, we're trying to create, so we have some backup, so not only one person knows how to.
Yeah.
To do that, so.
But you're a good primary right now, right?
Right, correct.
In the list of five jobs that you have, which one is out? I'm not sure, every time.
Humor.
It's funny, I mean. Scott Pedro defends you like there's no tomorrow, trust me. If you come up in a conversation, uh, Scott stops me in my tracks and, and says, follow him around for a couple of days and you'll see what's going on, so. Anyway, just a thought. Uh, did we vote on that?
No.
No, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Forty-four, discussion and or action on pending contract with the Humane Society of Marathon County for non-dog straights.
This is not T N R.
No, it is not.
Just want to make sure.
And it's a one-year contract.
Yep.
Um.
What's your pleasure?
Yes, I moved to approve the Humane Society of Marathon County Animal and Palms disagreement.
Uh, by Wyland? We have a second, fifteen thousand.
Eighteen five.
Eighteen of this, okay.
Which was butch.
Uh, seconded by Hardinger, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Uh, what is?
Oh, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
What is meant, I got you in your blind side. Um, what is meant about the Mountain Bay Metro Police Department could facilitate the contract?
And in the past, this contract was done through E M P D and then it came back to the municipality in the future. That's why we thought a one-year contract would be better. If the unification occurs, maybe this contract would actually reside with them. And then it would cover not just the village, it would cover the entire area.
And that would come out of their budget then?
It would be part of their budget, right, which comes back to all the municipalities as a share, but.
Chief Hunt said, I mean, he actually brought it up one night, right? Am I wrong?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Last page, everybody. I think you put up four or something like four quarters, I don't know. Forty-five, discussion and or action on reimbursement amount provided for neutered invocation that vaccination of non-dog straights. I was gonna say vacation. Um, motion or what?
Well, I guess.
Let's get it on the floor first.
Hmm. I want to talk about it first.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to put it on, to put it on the paper.
Uh, by Ermling?
Motion to in the, yeah. Yeah, it really wasn't quite, after I said it, I thought, okay.
It's on the agenda, we don't need a, a motion to discuss it, I don't think.
Would you have to have it on the floor before you could discuss?
Robert's rules of order, okay.
Yeah, okay, I make a motion to approve.
By Ermling, seconded by Wyland?
Still need it, because it is approved. It would be a motion to approve either.
In a dollar mark?
Yeah. The request is for an increase.
Okay, oh, that's gonna be hard. I move to increase the reimbursement amount for the T N B.
Try your motion in second. It wasn't legit.
Withdraw the motion.
It's not legit?
Yeah, if it's not a, a motion, that's.
It's not what they need.
Thank you. Withdraw your second. The voter man?
No.
Alright, now, new, uh, hello, new time.
Oh.
I move to increase the reimbursement amount for T N B R to fifteen thousand, not to exceed.
Nope.
Is that right?
Well, it would be, right now, it's a, it's a hundred dollars and it, so if you wanted to increase it, um, per reimbursement amount, it would be, we would be looking for, if it would be more than a hundred dollars, what that number would be. The total budget is fifteen thousand regardless, and that was, that was discussed tonight at finance as a, uh, adjustment to the budget.
Okay, so.
And I guess the reason why, maybe.
Yep.
The reason why I wanted to discuss this further is because a hundred dollars, I, I mean, has anybody got back to us, our ends? D N R, any vets in the area? No, so, it's a rock and a hard place. Personally, I, I just paid my cat, it was three hundred dollars. Bravies is twenty-five. You can't do anything with a hundred dollars. Nobody wants, um, I don't, I don't know where you want to go with it, but.
Your motion in a second?
She didn't give an amount though, yeah.
Yeah, not yet, so.
Doing a month.
So what, just, let's just a ballpark number, two hundred bucks, two fifty, what? I don't know how many we can, but let's say divided by two fifty, that's sixty.
So if fifteen. Someone else has made a motion, I will, I will move to leave the motion as it was in March, or I'm sorry, in February. Which should be one hundred dollars for occurrence, that's my motion.
Okay, nobody's gonna touch a cat.
I'll second that motion.
We'll, we'll have a discussion. We have a motion, a second, now discussion.
So, can I?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Here is the reason that I say that. My thought was, when I approved this, because we, I did take the money or sold budget. Um, when I made the motion to approve this, my thought was not to make the village fund this completely. Rothschild does not have this ordinance. I'm sure there's other communities out there that don't have this ordinance. And my hope was, if we, if we give a hundred dollars per occurrence, maybe there'll be some nonprofit self-funded group that will step up and start taking the, the lead with this and do their own fundraising to help pay for this. I don't think that this is something that should be paid, paid, I'm sorry, paid for solely by the Village of Weston Res.
So a hundred dollars to help, and then somebody else.
Somebody else needs to chip in the rest.
Okay.
That was my thought.
Not a bad thought.
Right, but feral cats, they start breeding at four months old. They don't breed one, they breed many. And then you bring them to Humane Society, they don't take them because they're feral. And then you bring them to humane society, they don't take them because they're feral. So then they inhumanely put them down. So there is no other option.
I guess this this might be a really arrogant statement, but I at least where I live, I don't see a problem with cats. I don't know if anybody else has the same problem, but.
There was a gentleman in the audience at the last meeting that said there is.
It wasn't bad.
It wasn't bad.
I say we at least bump it up fifty dollars. I move to increase the reimbursement amount of the.
We got a motion second on the floor right now. So this has to either go through or fail.
She can amend the motion. She can make a motion to amend by motion.
Just like that, I make motion to amend your motion.
And increase it by fifty dollars to one fifty.
Fifty dollars to one hundred and fifty.
So we have an amended motion. Do we have a second to that? Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a second to that by Hardinger. And now, we vote this amended motion. Yep, amended first. So all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye. Opposed? So three?
Yeah, please tell me who opposed, so I can write it down.
No, it's uh, no. Alright, so now we go back to the original motion and at least keep the hundred dollars on the on the table. Um all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, so we have a six to one approval of the hundred dollars towards the feral cats. Alright, new business, forty-six, discussion and or action on president's appointments to committees and commissions. Um in the package. We have Jim on uh H R, correct? That was approved.
In the last meeting.
Yes, and uh I. So then we have two, we have two tonight, so we have um to the joint, excuse me, how do you wanna, how do we say this, the Oversight Committee? So, Mountain Bay Oversight Board is gonna be uh Jim Pincinot, Jamie Wyland, and Mark Maloney.
And if you wanted to include in your motion, who would be for the oversight, who would be a one-year term and a two-year term? And then for the commission, who would be your one-year term, two-year term, and three-year terms?
So on the Oversight Board, which was the joint finance, we made those appointments every year, one-year terms. Because of, right, yeah, but the commission was different. But on the on the original, right now, the joint finance, we did it every year, I thought. Am I wrong?
Every, well, it was every.
Because of Stager, because of Stager. You know. If we can do twos and ones, fine, I'll do twos and ones.
Well, this is three, two, one, I think.
You can't do a three. How could you do three? You have to get, you have to go through the election.
Right, oversight, it's a one and a two. For commission, it's a one, two.
Alright, so if it's a one and a two, Jim and I have to be one, and Jamie is gonna be a two. Cause Jamie is gonna go through an election here, and she'll have two more years. Uh Jim and I have to run next April, so we are all gonna be one. Jim and I will be one, and Jamie will be two.
So with two members appointed by the Village of Weston serving a two-year term.
Not happening. Two of us are running for election next April.
But you would just, if it, if if one of us didn't get elected the following April, then you'd just.
They would fill that.
President, the new board president, reaport.
Pincinot and Wyland two, Maloney one. Alright, so now let's move, are we doing that one alone?
That's a, you could do them as separate if you want it.
Yeah, well, otherwise we're doing both together. How do they?
So then on the commission, two members appointed by the Village of Weston, serving a three-year term. One that would serve a one-year term and one that would serve a two-year term.
Dan Vergine is the one-year term. Uh Ryan Simmons is a three-year term. Uh Jeff Mahalik is a three-year term, and Jeff Wickersham is a two-year term. Everybody good?
Pam's got that.
Dan requested a one-year.
So, I move to approve the appointment of Dan Vergine, one year, Jeff Wickersham, two years, Ryan Simmons, three years. And Jeff Mahalik, three years, the Mountain Bay Metropolitan Police Department. And the appointment of Mark Maloney. One year, Jamie Wyland, two years, Jim Pincinot. Two years to the Mountain Bay Metropolitan Police Department Oversight Board.
We have a motion on the floor. Second by Hardinger. Uh anyone in the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried, forty-seven, discussion and or action on two thousand twenty-three budget amendment.
Move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-three budget amended as presented.
By Pincinot? By Cronin, all those in favor say aye. So carried, forty-eight, discussion and or action on two thousand twenty-four budget amendment.
Move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four budget amended.
By Pincinot? Second, by Cronin, second by Cronin, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried, forty-nine, discussion and or action on Kennedy Park Fundraising.
Move to defer action to the April Board of Trustees Meeting when funding sources and actual costs are available.
Is that could be enough time with Europe, East and everything? Sean?
Is that what?
Is that gonna be enough time to put everything together?
We should be able to get everything back for the fundraising as far as.
Otherwise, we just push a little one. I think that's a good motion. Second on the motion, uh second by Wyland, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried. Discussion and or action on improvements at Yellow Banks Park.
So the request in the packet was uh basically if you, I mean, the park committee recommended that we do apply for grants. And um the deadline for grants through Wisconsin D N R is May one. Um it would be a fifty fifty matching grant, but we do have to show that we would budget the entire amount. Uh but it could be a combination of forced labor, materials, and equipment. So um and there's approximately thirty-three thousand dollars in our cost estimate right now of materials. Labor and equipment usage, so um there may be a, you know, a partial amount that we would have to fund monetarily. Unless there's some other cost savings within that um estimate.
I move to approve moving forward with applying for grant funds to complete a parking area and improvements to the access at Yellow Banks Park.
By Cronin, second by Wyland, uh on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, discussion and or action on improvements at Mock Miller Park.
Uh so we did partially discuss this, um and it sounded like there was consensus at least. To, you know, possibly put some funding for this in the future C I P. Um as far as improvements are, you know, for the village, uh budgeting for some of the improvements along with, you know, possibly supplying materials. For some of that. That's something you would want us to bring back as far as like a, you know, C I P uh discussion.
What's your pleasure?
Were we actually, are are we, what's the cost for planning or we approving expenditure or just?
Yeah, we should proceed with, you know, working towards uh those improvements, basically.
By Wyland? Second by Hardinger, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carried, fifty-two, discussion and or action on Sand Hill and Mock Miller Roof Repairs.
Um so this was included, um we did get a cost estimate for the panels um from last year. At thirteen thousand, we did have a proposed budget of fifteen in the C I P. Um that didn't obviously cover, and I stated in my. Request that we didn't cover the train rental and the removal installation. Um I didn't wanna proceed to move forward with it, um but we are. Uh proposing to utilize some of the forty-six thousand dollar parkland dedication funds. To cover anything that would go up, be up above and beyond that. Of course, these this contract would come back to you for any approvals. And the other part with any parkland dedication funds is they need to be expended within seven years of acquiring them. And then Jen also let's share with the developers where these funds will be spent. So, um with the most recent parkland dedication co- funds coming in from Hinner Springs Edition. Um Sand Hill Meadows Park is closest to that um location. So it would be a good, you know, justification for spending uh funds from parkland dedication on the roof repairs at Sand Hill.
Okay, I move to approve moving forward with the road repairs with funding come parkland dedication.
By Urbiling, second by Zagami, uh question by Jim?
What is the age of the current roof?
Uh two thousand and three.
For twenty years.
So two thousand and three for um Sand Hill and two thousand and seven for Mock Miller. And they're the, actually, they're the most recent facilities we built.
Which one is in the photo that shows the roof just crumbling?
Uh Sand Hill.
So it's a twenty-year-old roof? Who made the last roof?
Uh same company that the estimates from Huffcut Concrete, uh Chippewa Falls. So it's a prefabricated um. Rescue facility where they bring in pieces and set it.
And so that that's a concrete roof, right? And generally speaking, it's probably never seen deicing chemicals or salt, right? What's the anticipated life expectancy? Like, why is it crumbling in twenty years? Pantheon in Rome is two thousand years old, and it looks beautiful.
If you see the pictures and there's some additional pictures from the same roof. You can see that the rebar that they placed in the roof is poking through, is put too close to the surface, which is causing it to. The mortar fell out and then the rebars started to rust. So then it started tearing from the edges.
Um what's the warranty on the new roof?
Uh I'm not sure.
It's not the same company, is it?
It is the same company. But I am meeting with a contractor tomorrow that may be able to make us panels on their own. Um versus, you know, because they don't even manufacture this model anymore. So it would be custom make, one-offs for both of them.
Um and and that's, you you must have read my notes here, reading my next question. I was gonna ask, is there any other company that would provide a roof? Because there are multiple companies in the state of Wisconsin that make these things to include another one in Chippewa Falls where Huffcut is.
You know, cement roofs with rebar, right? Has anybody talked to uh Wasata?
Uh no, but I am meeting with a diversified concrete contractor tomorrow to go over it. Um and it is basically like building in Span Creek. Spanning a opening, um so there, you know, it's just getting the correct measurements.
We did our Span Creek on this building. On these huge panels.
I'm a German town, I'm blanking on the name right now.
I mean, there's just not a chance I would go to the same vendor again.
Weird part is that it's the two newest ones we have that are failing.
That's even more reason I wouldn't go to them. Because it's called job security.
Blacklist from the village.
I'm sorry, Steve.
Have we, can you, does it have to be concrete or could we, like what we just did on the aquatic center on there? Could we just change it to a metal roof that's? Sixty years.
Let me answer that, because that's the next one. That same company out of Chippewa Falls that does these, if you look at their roofs, they're not concrete. They're wood and steel. So no, it does not have to be concrete unless this particular structure needs that for stability. I'm not an engineer.
That's a restroom facility.
What is it, a shelter?
Yeah, that's my question. Is it is it concrete because it's a shelter?
No, but I think that the reason for the concrete roof is that they are tied with steel steel members and welded to the walls. To support, so everything's kinda. Welded together to support the entire facility. So I don't know if replacing it with a steel roof, maybe covering over the existing roof. So steel might be satisfactory as far as that, but as far as replacing the concrete.
Yeah, just put steel over that.
Okay, so we're gonna let that be in your real house for a month? Are we gonna let that be in your wheels for a month? Or 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 should we just approve you to?
I figure moving forward with this, at least as long as we use parkland dedication funds and we can.
Uh most to approve?
Sorry on the floor.
All in favor say aye. So carried, fifty-three.
Were you talking about sushi?
Fifty-three, discussion and or action on reinstating the Community Life and Public Safety Committee, C L P S. C L P S, yep.
Move to approve reinstating the Community Life and Public Safety Committee and direct staff to draft an amendment to chapter two administration.
Motion by Pincinot? Second, second by Zagami, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carried, discussion fifty-four, discussion and or action to refer zoning ordinance violations at U S S A M. Self-storage Thirty-One Oh Seven Concord Avenue to Legal Counsel for Enforcement. By Urbiling? By Cronin. I have one question. Um did Steve know about this being on the agenda tonight?
Uh he asked for the items this morning, so yes, he did.
He did as of this morning, right, okay. But he did not know we put this on here last week. Correct. So this morning, uh because I talked to him this weekend, cause I asked, you know, was he gonna show up and? Whatever, whatever, he was completely, couldn't believe it, that it was on here. And um, you know, whatever, if if that's, if that's how we wanna do it.
It was my fault. I meant to do it. We got the agenda out late. On Thursday and Friday, it was very busy. I remembered this morning and he had already asked for the.
Um you know, he sits on our H R committee and has been on the board several times, which means nothing. But I just think anything on this agenda, I I don't care how busy we are, I don't care. Every single person or company, anybody should know if they're on this agenda. And I was, to be honest, I was a little shocked that he didn't know.
So in the past, planning commission does that, but that has not historically been done at the board level.
Oh, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Is it each department that has something on there that's supposed to do that, or is that something that the clerk sends out?
I actually don't care, as long as everybody on this agenda, and I'm speaking to everyone, not just to you. Anybody that's on here that we're gonna talk about in public, on the T V. They should know that they're gonna be on here. Now, that's something for all of you to decide how you wanna notify somebody. But for heaven's sakes, wouldn't that be, I mean, Mike, I I would be shocked. If I got talked about on on an agenda somewhere and nobody bothered to call me. For whatever reason, I I'm sorry, but that's not customer service. And it's a, he's a resident, he's a business owner. Um U S A M is in that spot today because Schofield and Weston, the town of Weston, worked together. To put the hotel by the log cabin up. The U S A M trailers were owned by Bud Levine, and he had them all there. And then Vilas Mock Mueller had them all moved over to that site, cause it wasn't out in the open. You couldn't see it when you went by log cabin or on the highway, we didn't have the highway go through yet. Uh so it was kinda hidden, and uh they've been there, what, thirty years? And um anyway, so uh you know, so then it went to Mark Quartz. And then Jody uh Manel worked there for the Mark Quartz, and the Mark Quartz became seventy or eighty years old. And they wanted to sell uh the U S A M, and so Jody and Steve decided to buy it, and here we are today. So um the there's a motion and a second on the floor. Um what's your?
Please restate the motion.
Uh the motion is exactly what fifty-four is, discussion and or action to refer zoning ordinance violations. At U S S A M Self-Storage Thirty-One Oh Seven Concord Avenue, a legal council for enforcement. Uh there's a motion and a second on the floor. What's your pleasure? I mean, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? No? Uh I think it's a six to one.
I said no.
You said no also? What?
I'm a no.
Just so two to two to five, okay? Alright, fifty-five, discussion and or action on agreement with Stillwater Landing Mobile Home Park. For the replacement of water main and repaving of streets from East Jellmac Avenue to Schofield Avenue. And motion approved, uh do I wanna say that second part two, A, update on timeline for Stillwater Landing Mobile Home Park? Probably is two different things, but motion approved by Zagami?
Second.
Second by Pincinot? Anyone in the discussion? Jim?
Is there an updated road facing plan?
So there, this map that I handed out, um the one that was in your packet had a very small extra uh red line. That went behind that office building, that's not gonna be considered for uh repaving. So the plan would be the red and yellow lines on the map would be completed with the water main replacement. The blue and green lines would be likely next year. Uh Keaton expressed, Mr. Schultz expressed, there was an interest to do the red, the blue, the yellow, and the green as much as possible. This year, but just said he wasn't sure based on what asphalt prices would come back at if he could do all of that. So it would be the red and the yellow this year, and then blue and green next year.
So his promise to asphalt the red and the green and yellow. So his promise to asphalt the red and the green and yellow or blue, I don't care. This year is now negated, but with possibility of asphalt prices. This is just, this is just not gonna go away.
The goal would be to do, to do all four colors.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Well, that's what he said he would do. And when we pressed him on it, he said that that's what he could do and he couldn't do the rest. Because we pressed him on doing that whole, you know, three quarters plus that middle, plus that little chute there. Um, I think we gave him the November first, right? Didn't we give him the November? That's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna do and put the base course in there, right?
We, we would restore the road to a base course, e- level with the asphalt.
Yeah.
At least they can drive through it.
Yeah, we would restore the, any trench disturbance from the water main replacement back to a, a drivable surface with base course. So, I mean, it would be something that whether they remove the asphalt or pulverizing, I guess that was a question. I know, uh, Josh Swenson, our utility superintendent, did meet with Keaton. Um, and I know they had a concrete contractor present. Not sure if their asphalt contractor was there or not, but, um, you know, those are some of the questions too, as far as, you know, do you have to? Cut the grade? Is there gonna be more filling that's necessary? So, and we would leave it as, a- as we find it as, you know, or I guess we'd put it back at gravel so that it can be graded or added to if needed.
Another question.
Yes, wait, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna remove though? Or everything from the road or the asphalt or just a trench?
We would remove what we need to remove. Uh, I know there's also a discussion if. They wanted to pulverize the entire road right away and then we would do our water main work and then. You know, restore back the pulverized roadway, that then they can begin grading and, um, shaping right away.
So I think it would better if they do the whole road.
Yep.
For driving on it.
Well, my thoughts, initially when we're gonna do this whole front and what you can see from the Schofield Avenue. I thought we should see all the stuff, oh, he should do all the other stuff. Which would then make him wanna do the rest sooner, but apparently that's just not gonna happen. I mean, we can dictate whatever we want here.
Is Keaton on?
Yes, he is on. So Keaton, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear. So Keaton, this, this is kind of a setback, huh?
Uh, what do, what do you mean?
What do I mean? Um, you had said that you were gonna do, if, does he have this colored map?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have that colored map ahead, i- in front of you or if you can see on the screen, you had said that you were gonna do. You were gonna pave the red, uh, I don't care what color you wanna call it, yellow or blue and the green this year. And now I'm hearing that that's not. You are gonna do that yet this year?
Yes.
Okay, is that true?
That's the ultimate goal.
Okay, so that's a yes.
So Keaton, when you met with the contractors today, does that continue? I mean, do you, do you feel confident that all of that can get done this year?
Yeah, yeah, it, the, the only, the only hangup that we could see that we're not totally understanding is what? The water main project is gonna entail and if that's why they wanna see what you guys are gonna put out for bid. Uh, whether you guys are gonna be saw cutting, digging a trench, where is exactly the water main? There was, uh, some questions that came up, so what, uh, Jensen and Sons and Ellen Becker came up with was. They wanted to see the bid that you guys are gonna push out so we can understand exactly what you guys are doing there.
So all said and done, Michael, um, you in and out, when is your out?
Like, like time wise or like?
Cause he, he would have to give these people that, or could he do the green while we're doing the red? And then we're out on the red and boom, boom, no. Almost have to do the red first.
Yeah, we'd probably have to do the red. I mean, as soon as we get the red done. I mean, they could kind of follow. I guess that'd be part of the coordination is, I mean, once we get the pipe in the ground, I mean. If they wanna shape it, the water main to remove it, replace that is, you know. I'd say a, a week and a half, uh, as long as there's not, you know, a, a big thunderstorm that comes through or something like that.
And then could you share with him all your specs?
Yeah, yeah, we, we can definitely do that.
We'll get that done when, do we have the specs yet?
They're finalizing them. I, I was supposed to get them this week, so.
Keaton, if we have those to you by the end of the week or possibly middle of next week, is that good?
Yeah, that's, cause I can get that to Ellen Becker and Jensen and then they can, they can review. What, what we came to conclusion out is. It'll act, we, we need the, the water main to be fully completed and then we can go in, because. Ellen Becker has to go lay, uh, the curb and gutter and then Jensen will come in. And, and do the asphalt and we just wanna do it in, in large sections, otherwise, otherwise it's not, it's, it's more. It's not cost effective to, to do it in, in like the red section, then the blue section and then the green section. It's the most cost effective to do it all in one big swoop.
How many feet of water is that?
Well, about thirteen hundred to go from East Jellmac to, uh, Schofield Ave. So a quarter mile.
Are these worth?
That's why I said, yeah, like kind of a week and a half, you know, the, the removals will take a, you know, a couple of days. And then, I mean, laying the pipe would, should be fairly quick if we can get. Yeah, I was gonna say four to five hundred feet a day. There's not really any lateral connections, so.
Jim?
Oops, sorry.
So to clarify, everything that's colored on the map right now, phase one, two and three will be completed. By November twentieth or whenever American asphalt shuts down, so twenty twenty four.
It should be, uh.
Keaton, S C U.
The, re- repeat the question you broke up a little bit.
Everything that's in color right now, phase one dash one, phase two, phase one dash two and phase three. Everything shown on the map will be completed by November twentieth. The curb, the gutter, the asphalt, both the binder and the finish cores. By November twentieth or whenever American asphalt shuts down for the year.
Yeah, Jensen and Son is doing the asphalt work, uh, and yes, that's the plan.
Okay.
And then what is the plan for the remainder of the park, which has no timeline for paving?
I don't have that at this moment. We're gonna see how this goes and, cause there, we have to, we're doing all the driveways as well. And we're sharpening our pencil the, to get all this completed. So there's still, there's still a little bit of a question mark because of the water main. Uh, cause we don't know if you guys are saw cutting yet, where the water main is in the road, uh, so we wanna figure out some of those, those items.
Do you have a preference on how you want us to do that?
What, what, uh, what was mentioned is if you guys were going to saw cut it. What we could do is we could look at what you guys were gonna spend for saw cutting. Then Ellen Becker or, uh, Jensen could come in. And what that was gonna be, that was gonna be spent, then that could go to them. They could pulverize the whole side. And we could just basically open it up for you guys. They just, we shot a whole bunch of ideas, but we just don't know what, uh, you guys are planning. So we, at, kind of at a certain point, we're like, well, let's just wait to hear, uh, what the exact plan is from you guys. So that's when we, that's when we just walked the park and the, and we extended out. The green line is extended out a little bit, so it'll, it'll go to the, to the corners. We were, we were marking up a few different things and making some plans, so.
So Keaton, you had just mentioned that the driveways would all be done too. Is that on all driveways or just your new models that were put in?
That's, that's on any driveways that are on the green line and on the other line, but the. The driveways that we're doing is gonna, that green line, that's kind of going to the east. That's gonna go, that's gonna go roughly, our, our plan is to extend that out until that turn. Um, just be, be, right before the turn, so it's gonna be a straight cut. And then all those driveways on both sides of the road, uh, along there is gonna be done. And then there's, uh, if you look right where that, there's a phase three arrow. Okay, so there's a phase three arrow. Our plan is currently to extend that out. Uh, basically right in where that home ends, so then, so everything's straight cut. And so we're taking care of the, the curb and gutter on the sides.
Okay. It's it?
So you're not, you're not doing driveways on, on three or just?
No, you, you are doing driveways on phase three, on that green line.
I just said that I am, yes, yep.
And blue and yellow.
Yep.
Okay.
I think the motion was to approve the agreement, yes?
Yep, yep.
Um, do we wanna add? That the agreement includes completion of the phases?
Yes.
All right, who made the motion? O'Shea, are you gonna add that to it?
Sure.
And second by?
I amend my motion to complete the project by November twenty, twenty?
Were you a second?
I will second that.
Yep, okay.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now on the original, um, motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Thank you, Keaton.
No problem.
Thank you. Fifty six, discussion and or action on Jellmac Avenue, Mockmuller to Alderson rehabilitation bid results. Rehabilitation.
Move toward the Jellmac Ave, Mockmuller Alderson Construction Contract, Hassan Sons Incorporated for base bid plus alternate one. Nine hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and ten cents.
By Pincinel?
Second.
Second by Wyland. Uh, anything more on discussion? There are none. Uh, discussion?
Yes. Uh, the entire asphalt surface will be removed, correct? Not, it's not an overlay? Correct, yeah, so it's a removal of the existing asphalt on Jellmac. Thank you.
Yep. So all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty eight, discussion and or action on East Jellmac, design amendment for additional water main replacement.
I move.
Discussion and or action, uh, moving back to fifty seven. Barb forgot it. Uh, discussion and or action on intersection control evaluation. Study for Alderson Street and Jellmac Avenue. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
By Zagami? Second by Ermeling? On the discussion?
Yes. Um, the contract states it will provide up to three alternates. Can I get changed? So we'll provide three alternates?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is what we discussed last month, right?
Go ahead. And then it says, uh, cost estimates will be provided for the other two alternates. It says there will not be a cost estimate provided for a roundabout, which is kind of sad, because then these same guys just do another roundabout like. I, I think that's why I, I, ah, shoot, sorry. Oh, like they're not gonna provide one because they just did one, so there's carbon copy, whatever that number was. Yeah, so, so, so the level of work is a little less. Understood.
Okay, that's significantly less than what we talked about, wasn't it?
I think I said, I was thinking it'd be about ten.
Yeah, ten, twelve, I thought.
Yeah, so.
That's good. Yeah.
All right, all ready? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Uh, discussion and or action on East Jellmac Design Amendment for additional water main replacement.
Pleasure? Move to approve the contract amendment for the East Jellmac and Von Canal Street Reconstruction. Engineering Services Contract, Clark Deeds, for an amount of fifteen thousand for replacing the existing water mains. Connecting East Jellmac Ave to Schofield Ave through the Stillwater Landing Mobile Park.
A motion by Pincinel?
Second.
Second by Cronin. Any more on the discussion?
This will be funded by utilities, correct? Correct, yeah, there'd be a water utility expense.
Any more discussion?
That includes inspection, that's not all design.
Okay, right, yep, that's design and construction services.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty nine, discussion and or action on East Jellmac Avenue Declaration of Public Road.
Move to approve staff moving forward with clarifying the right of way for East Jellmac Ave. From Kirk Street to Von Canal Street, do the notice of public road.
A motion by Pincinel?
Second.
Second by Ermeling?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any more in discussion?
There's a question. Uh, yes, Jim. Do we have other roads in the village that have this issue? We probably do.
Okay.
Um, this one came up strictly through the title search of getting the design done and, uh, noticing that, uh. The roadway isn't generally built north of the right of way that was dedicated, but everything that's been built since the road was there. Built like it's, the road is where it's supposed to be, it's just the legal descriptions don't match. And then, um, it, it, there's a mention there, but the previous case law that talks about a sixty six foot right of way on a highway. Is that gonna be an issue for some of these narrower streets like on Hinner Springs, or is that already a sixty six foot right of way and we just paved less? Yeah, so, so it already fits a sixty six foot right of way, uh.
I mean, that includes the sidewalk, that includes.
Includes everything, it's pretty much back of ditch to back of ditch. I, I, if there is a street out there that's platted at a fifty foot right of way. Um, like, uh, Newport Avenue, Bladle, that area, those are pretty narrow right of ways. I, I, but the original plat would, I'm guessing superseded. Um, it was a sixty six foot right of way that was dedicated for East Jellmac Ave. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, everybody, um. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, uh, sixty, discussion and or action on Fuller Street and Schofield Avenue, intersection realignment, design amendment.
I move to approve the design amendment with Becker Hoppy for the realignment of Fuller Street to the west to align with Old Costa Road to the south of Schofield Ave. For a cost not to exceed sixty two thousand five hundred dollars.
By Cronin?
Second.
Second by Pincinel on the question. So, go ahead.
To the neighbors and, I mean, where this is gonna go, are you good with this?
I have talked with the owners of Arrow Sports Bar, um. Several times.
And, uh, um, the bowling alley?
I haven't talked to the bowling alley much, uh, mainly because the, the majority of this is on Arrow's property, um.
But it'll affect.
It will affect.
And then how about, uh, that solid brick home?
Yeah, so that's, so this, the house and the bar are owned by the, uh, La Porte Tesmer family.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so that's why the.
So I look at this, I take this road all the time. And I'm looking at this and I'm looking at this and I'm looking at this and I mean, so the total thing is how much? Six street? No, no, no. So i- it's right now, it's sitting there free, right? It's free. I've been driving on that thing for twenty five years. So now we're gonna do the engineering, we're gonna rebuild the road, we're gonna do this, do this. Acquire some land, do something with the existing road, you know, give it back to whoever. Total picture, how much is all that gonna cost? Just ballpark, ballpark, a, a, a million, half million?
Design, you talk about construction.
Everything. It's all said and done, I now drive.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, I mean, the entire Fuller Street project's about three point two five million, but that goes all the way from Schofield Ave to Ross.
Isn't that what kind of kickstarted this, is redoing Fuller again?
Correct.
And then this is gonna get redone either way.
Well, Fuller has to get redone. Yeah, well, I, do we need to correct?
Well, we're gonna do it anyway.
No, 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 we, we, everything from that point all the way to, to Ross Avenue, sure, that has to get done. You know, I mean, Masquerade got done, you know, Fuller is in, in tough shape. Um, but. Uh, whatever we're gonna do in Fuller, can't we kind of extend that from the trailer park to Schofield Avenue? And have the intersection the way it is? Um, I, I mean, when we spend that kind of money, I, I, I'm just, I'm on the discussion side too. So when we spend that kind of money, I'm not, no, I'm not saying in the mean way. But when, we're gonna spend that kind of money to direct it and then it's still not a nice purple, a perfect, uh, whatever you call it, cross. And then I'm gonna have to go up there and make a, 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 quite a significant left jog with. The trailer park in and out right there, right at that point.
So this is a rough concept of just what that, I mean, this is a, an approximate sixty six foot right of way. So the roadway itself could have a little bit of a, a curve in it, um, I, I. The intersection study.
Yeah.
Did say just leave it as is right now, um, and.
So, so what happens to the road, the existing road on the other side?
So we'd probably vacate, um, some of it.
And, and that would have to deal with that road with the Tesmers because we're taking some, but maybe giving some back.
Correct.
Um, a, a, a plus. I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this, but it's not the nicest looking back of a, of their place with the, uh, the garbage out there, which I look at all the time. Um, so that won't be seen anymore. Um, I just wonder if it's worth it. That's all I'm gonna say, uh, O'Shea?
Our committee voted down.
What is it?
Our committee, of the fourth committee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we voted down because we don't agree with it.
You, so you wanna do Fuller, but as the existing Fuller? Oh, okay. You, so you wanna do Fuller, but as the existing Fuller? Oh, okay.
That's just until time come, they can do it. The other option is we should just go full project and put it around.
Okay.
That's only two way we.
Okay, Steve?
The Schofield Ave corridor plan, correct me if I'm wrong, does call for realigning this road.
Yeah.
That's where the conversation went.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, it does.
So, you would ask why we were doing it.
But doesn't have to. So if the committee voted it down, how did it get here?
The board approved. The board, the board said, we, we wanna realign the road.
Kick back to us.
I'm sure I did, I'm sure I was part of that. Okay, no, I am, I'm sure I was. But, but I never looked at it the way I did this weekend, and when I stared at it, stared at it, stared at it, I go, wow, that's a lot of money. And then, you know, I don't know, is it a balance act with the Tesmers, or is Dale gonna say, I don't want a road right next to my parking lot, I don't know. And then is Dale gonna want an, an entrance off of that road? Could we give him a, an entrance? I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I, boy, if I was him, I certainly would, or for sure an exit, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, yeah, I, 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 every time this was brought up, I go, okay, yes, but I don't know if the cost justifies. Is there anything you can do different with the intersection right there? There looks like that could be straightened out a little different. And just make it a little friendlier. I, I go up and down that way all the time. And the only thing is, you, you, you have to pull out and, and look, but I just think that that could be straightened out better and it'd be a whole heck of a lot cheaper than.
Well, it is, it is straightened out, I mean, you gotta kinda get yourself perpendicular to the road, am I saying it right?
Well, just if you look at the way it is.
Yeah, but if I'm going east, if I'm on Fuller and I'm gonna go left east on, uh, Schofield, you gotta kinda set yourself up. Um, I don't know if there's some trees that maybe could get cut down, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and that would, would be part of any.
Then Tesmers are gonna wanna, uh, 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 a road off to their parking lot too. Mm-hmm. Right, cause they're gonna lose the one on the other side.
Yep. Yeah.
So, Steve, any more? And this is the one that we said no to the roundabout, right?
Yep.
I, I got Jessica.
Do you have any utilities that have to move?
Yeah, so there'd be some water and sewer main that we would relocate, um.
What, what, I, I don't know how you ask that question. So as, as an added cost, or?
Yes, so that would be added cost to our utility customers for moving something that we don't have to.
I thought you meant fix a problem we have underground, okay. So we're talking some bucks?
Yeah.
Okay. So we got, it, it's, it's up, go ahead, someone's got a question?
No, I should call.
Uh, I'm, I'm actually trying to figure out what, how the number is.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay, uh, call the question. So right now, it is discussion interaction of Fuller Street, Schofield Action, so it is to say yes. Uh, call the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I'll do this again. So who are the ayes? You, just two ayes, that's it? And three?
No.
Three noes?
No.
Done, I don't have to vote. Right, right, I read that, oh, like on page sixty-six, a Robert Rules of Order. I only have to vote in case of a tie.
Yes, that's correct.
I've already, I'm just being mad at me already today. Alright, so it fails, uh, Michael, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael. What are you gonna do?
So, so I, I guess that, that's my next question is, so the board had a motion to realign the road, and now, I guess your motion is to not.
Realigning the road.
Alignment of the road.
The board is wrong.
What are you gonna do now, Michael?
The board is wrong.
Do I need a motion to use the existing alignment?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Bring that back.
And, uh, I would hurry, get a plaque and say how we're wrong, we're wrong. When, when we said the alignment, I would, I would, I'd sign it, that I was wrong.
I, I probably should have, I, I should have had more information on what the cost of realigning the road would be too, so I.
Well, I think we should see the whole picture, yeah.
Michael, could you bring that? Proposal the engineer had, how to correct the intersection?
Yes, yeah, that was part of the intersection study.
Right, okay.
And then we have to give access to the cell tower too.
Yeah, so, so that was all things I was talking about, the, uh, the Tesmer Laports about was how we would maintain access to the cell tower, that house. So, yeah.
Okay.
I guess if we keep it as is, that's.
Sixty failed. Sixty-one, discussion and our action on purchase of replacement sewer vac truck chassis. Is this a planned event or?
For the purchase of the Peterbilt chassis, GX truck for a hundred eighty thousand seven hundred.
Motion by Pincenol.
Okay.
Second by Hardinger. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Standby.
Uh, there's a discussion.
You have discussion?
Are you?
Oh, go ahead.
Will staff be outfitting the chassis?
No.
Very well. Carry on with the vote.
That's it?
What's, who's gonna be?
I'm allowed to have all, all those, I'm, and I love every one of them. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Sixty-two, discussion and our action on placement of stop signs within the Everest Edition.
I move.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
I move to direct staff to install stop signs within the Everest Addiction, Addition, at the seven identified uncontrolled intersections along Lawndale Street as well as the intersection of Daly Avenue and Northland Street.
Uh, motion by Ermeling?
I'm second.
Second by Zagami. On the question. I'm first, I, I'm gonna go first, I'm gonna go first, I'm just gonna change it up a little bit. So Jennifer, remember when, um, Josh Dickinson called, Dickerson, Dickerson from the school board called, right? And he had a little scuff with Jared. But his, was his want this, or was his want the outside lane closest to the senior high? He, did he want the, the, the four, like, the ones or the threes? You know what I'm saying? Oh, there it is, okay. So, for some reason, I thought, he thought that this was a racetrack, but this is the, the heavy, heavy dangerous.
Those are, yeah.
They're horrible, you know, and then, uh, there are some stop signs here, so we'd go here, three, four, five, six.
I might go one down here.
Oh, seven's four, is there eight total or seven, or seven?
Seven.
Okay, now, I'm gonna dovetail on that, because I, I pushed that, I pushed that really hard, why not, why not, why not? I went back to it, drove it, I go, oh my god, that's dangerous as hell. So I went to the E N P D. And I got a solid firm, no. They already did a study on it, and they said no. I thought it was wrong, you probably don't even, weren't even talked to about it, I'm sure you weren't. But I just could not understand how you could have, you know, people from the highway side, you know, they gotta get seven blocks to get to, uh, Jellnik. I'm gonna be speeding, there's no doubt in my mind, I'm doing forty, forty-two easily, every single day, uh, in the morning, no doubt, I am, no doubt. And, um, so do we need a stop sign everyone, or do we need a stop sign every other one?
Yeah, so.
Whose request is this, by the way?
Uh, it came up as, as part of the Public Works, um, Committee in February of.
Who?
Tom Hubbard from the Public Works Committee brought it up.
By resident? Does he live in there?
Uh, he, he, it was something he observed during school drop-off pickup.
Yeah.
And so, I, I guess just to clarify, all those stop signs on Normandy.
Here?
Tho- those are on like Foothill, Hughes, Daly, Normandy doesn't have a stop control.
Right, so all these have to stop.
Correct.
And this, this guy gets to go, but this guy gets to go or gal go, knowing that everybody else has to stop.
Correct.
So now this one, we're gonna get the same thing, or we're gonna stop which one?
I, I was thinking we would stop Lawndale. Unless you wanna just keep it on the side.
If we stop Lawndale, Lawndale's done. You might as well plant grass.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I would, I mean, if nobody's gonna drive Lawndale, stop, 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 no way. Cause that's my, oh, that's a feeder, that's a feeder road. Mm-hmm. So maybe every other one, maybe? I think Josh was looking for just, just to get him not to fly through there.
Sure.
And so if you did one, two, you know, three, maybe that's the way to go. I, I would talk to the residents, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing was.
You've got a whole bunch of time on your hands now, you know, so, all that works is done now. You can spend your other forty hours over there talking to some residents, so.
The biggest thing was just trying to make it so you under, so there, you at least knew somebody was stopping, you didn't. Cause otherwise people are going in both thinking.
And then I, I would imagine, if you're gonna stop this one, you might throw a couple over here.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't do these, I would do them, but I, I, that's just my one opinion.
Yep, a few years ago, Wassa did the same thing at a bunch of their neighborhoods, cause they had a few actually really significant crashes in some of their neighborhoods.
And I am in favor of leaving Lawndale open so that you can, but I think all the, all the horizontal streets should have a two-way, should have a stop.
Treat it the same way, so all north, south.
Maybe Lawndale gives two or one, at least so you can't fly seven blocks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Everest or something.
Steve, what do you think? Thinking, yeah.
Get us the cops about traffic stuff.
I, I know, but you're.
Just go if something mad happens.
If there's a crash, if there's a crash, you're there.
Yeah, but he's a light side.
He doesn't stop anyway.
I will say from a response standpoint, because our guys do, and they truly do stop or at least slow down pretty good at every intersection. If we gotta go down Lawndale, that's gonna suck. Okay. Um, so. But just the time.
It's kinda a, it's kind of a double edged sword, you know.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, I think a little more study, yep.
Uh, so, so nothing on the bottom, or it was, so we're not concerned about the uncontrolled intersections, say, on Highland?
Is this Highland right here?
Yeah, Highland's down.
Highland is dead.
Uh, understood.
Or T intersections, they're not.
Like three houses.
You can't even get going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you, you have to do like.
Stop signs that grew and, uh, or got replaced that didn't exist before, there were three uncontrolled intersections and there are now two, there's still one that remains.
That one's locked, yeah.
The corner of Kennedy and September.
Yeah, okay.
So, point on.
A T there.
Nick's got a.
You have to hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Nick, give me to catch up.
Wh- what if stop signs are just put on Everest, because that's, most of the kids that are, or teens that are walking to the east either take the sidewalk up by the football field on Jellnik, or they walk down Everest and then cut into the fields.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's, I'm assuming if there's speeding complaints, it's because of the kids that are walking.
Protection, yeah.
On the road.
Twice a day, at least.
And then that would stop traffic halfway, and that's more of a major.
Maybe that's what we do.
Yeah, I, I guess the concern wasn't so much speeding, it was just two cars coming, uh, being in uncontrolled intersection at a four-way intersection. But I mean, definitely we could, I mean, Lawndale, the one stop sign at Everest and Lawndale, we could make it so it's the north, south, it's, it's Lawndale traffic that stops.
Well, I think we can stay with this motion because it doesn't, uh, say an amount.
Yeah, it does.
Well, I, I, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move to recommend or direct staff to work with the E N P D.
There's already a motion on the floor, so you have to amend the motion.
I did hear a motion on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
I'm rushing. I'm sorry, I don't care.
She's a gatekeeper.
She is.
Great, wonderful. Yep. Don't upset her.
I don't know, what, what was the motion?
Also, that was.
Yeah, just asking.
So the motion was just to direct staff to install signs a lot, within the Everest Edition at the seven unidentified uncontrolled intersections along Lawndale, as well as the intersection at Daly Ave and Northland. I mean, we can work with E N P D on how we wanna configure that.
But what was laid out up there is not what was gonna happen.
Well, all, all we did was put an X at the intersection, not actually saying.
I guess that's my concern, is I'd, I'd actually like to see what's going to happen.
Sure, we can bring it back before we install them, I guess.
Okay.
I can just do that next month.
Gonna push it to next month?
You can still approve it, I'll bring it back before we install them.
So we need, making amendments to that?
Or, or let's go through. You're looking at me, I don't know, we didn't get to the average class yet.
Let's draw a motion.
We're gonna withdraw the motion?
He said he'd.
That's fine, you can withdraw.
You did the first, okay. Um, I withdraw my motion and refer it to next meeting.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
So what?
Sixty-three, discussion and or action on two thousand twenty-four street maintenance plan.
Ooh. Move to the twenty twenty-four street maintenance plan as presented, as well as moving one hundred thousand knowledge and salt savings from the winter maintenance budget to the street maintenance.
I'll second.
Do a favor. So motion by Pincenol, second by Hardinger. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, motion to move into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five, current woman, current E deliberate, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to win. Consideration of property purchase in tid two as a tid expense.
This is more fun. You guys are a lot more fun than walking.
Thanks, Pat. Uh, let's see, motion would be in order by, uh, Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Cronin. Uh, roll call vote.
Roni?
Yes.
Zagami?
Yes.
Cronin?
Aye.
Ermeling?
Yep.
Hardinger?
Yes.
Pincenol?
Yes. And Wyland, head of leave.
Yes.
Uh, we are now in closed session. Thank you. Sixteen.
Oh, go ahead. Do you, want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I move to direct staff to work with attorney E D on the consideration of prop- property purchase in tid two as a tid expense.
I'll second.
Motion by Cronin, second by Hardinger. Uh, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, possible action on, uh, did that? Attorney referrals, any attorney referrals? We just did. Staff referrals, Jim? No. You know, can staff referrals come out?
No.
Yeah, cause we go to Jamie. Stuff now.
Well, unless they, there's something that the board, a trustee would find the board to act on.
Okay, that's, I, I'll go on.
To send to.
Yeah, I'll go on that. Any staff referrals?
I don't believe so.
Uh, Hardinger? Okay. Well, and, and. They make those with a little bit pink frosting, just so you know.
That would have been better.
So, uh, Cronin? Uh, Zagami? And Ermeling? And nothing for me on staff referrals. Remarks from trustees? Jim?
None? Yes, uh, the wire, excellent job, um.
Yeah, I, I said that too, I, I sent an email, I thought it was outstanding, I loved the little trees and I don't think I should be able to say where those are, but, we have fifty-two people already, right? The crossroad, two people only on the crossword?
Yeah, fifty-three people on the trees.
Yeah, but the crossword, none, like two, and like two on the, I vote?
So far, and we'll, we expect we'll get a big brush from them this week.
Okay, I, I just was excited, I read it and I thought it was really cool. There's some jokers on the front page that look a little retarded, but, so. Anyway, what in particular?
So, right, uh. The increased participation involvement from all departments greatly appreciated and I think that's good. Uh, I, I heard feedback at my store from folks that read it and I thought it was good.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Not, not people I work with, but people that maybe were gonna go, um, and then encouraging engagement with the residents, I think is very welcome and good, so, thank you. Um, what's the progress on Robert Rules of Orders?
You're welcome.
Just done.
No, I had reached out about training, and I haven't heard back, so I need to find a, another contact within an extension that can do training, so that's on my list.
Training?
Yeah, that would just come in and do like a review of Robert's rules.
To who?
Everyone.
The board. If you, if you want.
Okay.
But if you're, then you don't have to go.
We have to dress up in like. It's gonna be a three hour session at the end of the April Board of Trustees meeting.
Yeah, I I. I'm several chapters through it, I I'm not intrigued.
And then, uh, in, I think it was last month, um, trustee Cronin mentioned some about the C V B. Contract that we could, we discussed that, or talk about that, can that come back in April?
Which contract?
We, I think we had said that it was with. Yeah.
So we just gotta go to the tourism.
Tourism is.
Tourism, tourism is a makeup of finance and several others.
But it hasn't met since then, right?
It's gonna meet the next, the next week, the next time, April, it'll meet four times a year.
Topic should that, what kind of agenda items should that be?
Um, I think, uh, the agenda should be grill white. Sorry.
His name is Tim White.
Oh.[1560.24]